Session, but we will ask for a report out from our city attorney and then we'll begin with the regular agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss labor negotiations with its designated labor negotiators, Attorney Kevin Dale and City Manager Jarb. And direction was given to the negotiators by the council. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to begin with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you would please stand.
Start with an invocation. Your Father in Heaven, thank you for bringing us all here together to discuss the very important business of our community and how the decisions we make here affect the lives of not only the folks that live here, but the folks that do business and work here as well. We ask you to guide us tonight. We thank you for the blessings and the privilege to be part of this, and we again ask that you guide us through the agenda and our deliberations as we try to do what is best. In your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, founded under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and moral principles.
Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay. Before we get into the public participation part of tonight's meeting, I want to take a little prerogative here. We have planned to adjourn the council meeting tonight in memory of two friends of the city, but I'd like to talk about it now because my guess is that most of you probably won't be here towards the end of the meeting, and I'm not sure how long this will go. But we are going to adjourn tonight in memory of Mr. Dick Wiley and Mr. Joe Frink. Dick passed away on July 5th, and Joe passed away on June 13th. Both were longtime members of the Historical Commission, both cared deeply about the city and the community, and both were very actively involved in what happens here, not only at our council meetings, but with talking with city employees and visits to City Hall and working on projects. Dick always had an idea or something he was willing to share with the council, and Joe had a great passion for the care and upkeep of his ancestral family home, the Frink Adobe. And so we were all sad to hear about their passing, very sad to hear. It was a pretty sad, emotional thing to hear. I cared deeply about both of them, so I wanted to honor them and talk about them before we got too much further into this, and I hope you all keep their families in your thoughts and prayers. So moving along, are there any request slips?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two speakers that I show. I don't know if one, I don't know if there's anymore. I have Raul Kalunga.
Mayor Dupre, members of the City Council, staff, excuse me. Sorry about that. Good evening. I just want to introduce myself. My name, I'm a 22-year employee of the City of Loma Linda. I work in the Public Works Department. Previously, I was in the Planning Department, but for the past 15 years, I've been in Public Works. I'm also in the group president for the Professional Administrative Employees Association. Right now, there are 10 members in our group. They currently are in finance, in the Finance Department, Code Enforcement, Animal Control, Information Systems, and there's three of us in Administrative Support and Community Development and in Public Works Department. And I believe my other colleague, Nidia, helps out in Fire. Recently, I did a query on the Consumer Price Index for the Inland Empire. The Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics for the month of May has indicated that the inflation rate for the Inland Empire is about 4%. In light of the negotiations that are going on, I just wanted to convey that as far as whatever's offered is in terms of a Casa Levin Agreement, just taking into account inflation's going to eat into that, and that's going to diminish the buying power of those of us employees that are providing for our family. Right now, my wife and I, we have two kids in college that'll start in the fall. And just the other thing I wanted to mention, like I previously indicated, I was seven years in planning. There was a layoff that came along. I was asked to sign a document to come into Public Works. I was never given a copy of the document, and according to the document that was on the, that I signed in the office of the Finance Director, is going to save the City of Loma Linda $25,000 a year. It's been 15 years. I do realize we're dealing with financial constraints, but according to my math, that's I want to take this time to say that my colleagues and I, in the Public Works Department and the other departments that I've mentioned, we bring dedication, effort, and energy in providing service to the residents of the City of Loma Linda. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
We have another speaker, Susan Montenegro.
Hi, I've been here before. So the last time I was here, my name is Susan Montenegro, by the way. I live in 25431 Park Avenue, Loma Linda, California. I've been there since 1970. But anyway, the last time I was here, I was very impressed because I think Councilman Papiskiu, I think he was, that's the first time that, but anyway, I was impressed that he was the only one who talked about the budget before you spend money. And I was very impressed because the rest of you just get, ah, ah, okay, we'll spend this money. But he said, oh, let's look at the budget first. And I was really very impressed when he said that. Still, but we cannot clone you, send you to Washington and Sacramento because we need more politicians like you. And I pray that, please, stay that way. So the next thing I want to talk about is that my neighborhood, we are not rich, but it's a rich neighborhood. I look at my neighborhood like a bouquet of flowers. Okay, there's so many different cultures, so many different faiths. We get along very well. It's a beautiful neighborhood. But once in a while, especially now, the renters, there will be only one rotten apple to spoil the whole barrel of apple. So I have noticed in my neighborhood that there's so many, there's few empty houses that's to be rented, and there are few people moving out, and there's few families moving in. And Loma Linda, the City of Loma Linda is a unique city, which I mentioned before. I traveled all around the world. I live outside United States, okay? So I know what I'm talking about. As a matter of fact, before Google Internet in the 60s, I lived in Guam. That was the height, the last height of the Vietnam era, okay, Vietnam War. There was a flood in Loma Linda, and that was the first time I hear about the City of Loma Linda. Because the people in Guam, the Chamors are mostly Catholic. They got together, have a picnic in the beach. We have a potluck. And the potluck was about praying for the City of Loma Linda because Loma Linda had a flood, and that was the first time I heard about Loma Linda. And it has nothing to do with the Seventh-day Adventist Church because the people there were mostly Catholic. And I have traveled in South Pacific, the Caribbean, Spain, France. Loma Linda is a unique city. They do not separate Loma Linda Hospital from the city. They think it's one. And I thought, what makes Loma Linda so unique? I have thought about it, and I realized what makes this place unique is that the different culture that we have around and the different faith that is around our neighborhood, that we get along very well. We have Hindus, we have Buddhists, we have Seventh-day Adventists, we have Protestants, we have Catholics. We have all kinds, but we get along, and it's a good neighborhood. But likewise, I said, once in a while, there will be some that are literally a nightmare, neighbors that are nightmare. So every so often, I receive this in the mail, recycle right way every two months. I was wondering if maybe while you're sending this one, you will also send some kind of a letter from each one of you, you alternate, you know, the City Council, the mayor, the manager, to welcome the people that are new in the area and with that a list of the different city ordinance, like for example, the noise, the curfew. So I don't know what the rest are, but it would be nice if you include that in this letter. In that way, the new residents would know what to expect or what the city expects out of them. And I know that will take money, printing, processing, and all that. So maybe you can take advertisement from all kinds of businesses, like painters, electrician, include their, a list of local businesses with your telephone number, so the new residents and the old residents will have that information, and it will come handy. I know the Google is here and the internet also, but it's so handy to have, besides all people like me, I still like to look at the paper. You know, I still read a book, even if I, my children provided me with laptop and smartphone and whatever. I have all of that, but I still look at, read a book. So there are still few of us left in this world that read papers. So, and not only that, it might be a one-way of you guys to introduce to the community. And that way, when election time comes, maybe more people will vote. We'll go to ballot, take time to show that, oh, so-and-so have accomplished this one, maybe we should help him. You know, we should go and vote, but instead, we're so lazy, we don't go vote. Of, I vote, yeah. Although sometimes I put Donald Duck in the ballot because my choices are crappy. So like for president, what am I going to put this time? I don't even know. Maybe I'll put Mickey Mouse, at least it's local. So it's, that's our choices nowadays. And that's why I was very impressed with Councilman Papiskiu when he said, you know, he bring up that, the budget, because like what's going on? Okay, the politician raised the minimum with, okay? So what happened? To help the poor people? Now, now what happened? The poor is poorer, the middle class is poor. Who's benefiting it? I mean, it's ridiculous. There are so many people, professional families moving out of Loma Linda, I mean, not just Loma Linda, California. If you don't believe me, look at the Google. For a few years now, there's more people move, professional people moving out of Loma Linda. And the other state are sending their undesirable constituent to California and Hawaii. They have the choice. The reason I know that, when I went to Hawaii, I sat down with a man that smelled so bad. So I asked that thing that, that, who made it? I know it's going on that way now because the other state, they give them one way past to, they have the choice to go to California or Hawaii. So that's why we have so many homeless people. So anyway, that's all I have to say, and thank you, and I pray for you all.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on a non-agendized item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to our scheduled items that are on the agenda, beginning with 2A, which is Council Bill R. 2024-24, and that's our Spring Weed Abatement Program.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me here tonight. This evening, I'll be going over the Spring 2024 Weed Abatement Program. Tonight is my recommendation that the Council receive the report of the Spring 2024 Weed Abatement Program and approve the report and accounting costs, how that you adopt the accompanying resolution and establish liens and assessments on the properties involved. According to California Fire Code, Section 304, and amended by the Loma Linda Municipal Code, establishes the authority for removing combustible vegetation when it is determined to be a fire hazard. So this season of Spring 2024 Weed Abatement, it began on April 1st and continued to the 2nd. I inspected approximately 300 parcels this season with 248 notices to clean property sent out to individuals. You can see that on Exhibit A that's been provided for you. They were sent by mail on April 16th to the owner of record, which is provided to us by the County Assessor's Office. 14 letters were returned to sender, in which I took those physical letters and posted them physically on the properties. Follow-up inspections began between May 1st and 2nd, and the combustible vegetation fire hazards were abated by a city contractor in a total of nine. On June 25th, the invoices, which you'll see on Exhibit B, specify the cost of the work performed by the contractor plus the city's administrative fees. These were mailed out to the owner of record, and the deadline was tonight, or July 9th. City contractor has the list of unpaid invoices on Exhibit C. And subsequent to tonight's meeting, the hearing and council action report of costs with accompanying resolution will be forwarded to the Property Tax Division of the San Bernardino County Audit and Controller Recorder's Office. This season had no adverse environmental impacts, and the financial impact is outlined on Exhibit C, like I've said before. That completes my agenda or my report.
Dr. Daly.
Just out of curiosity, because I've been looking at those reports for a while now.
Yes, sir.
This is the shortest list I've seen that I can recall. Have we done anything different?
There's actually a couple more than I usually have on this list. I'm usually hovering somewhere around.
Full page, usually.
In the past, yes, years before, yes, there's been a lot more. I would like to attribute it to my own personal actions.
Well, I was giving you the opportunity to do that.
My stellar performance as a member of the city, although I think it has a lot more to do with development. I think that plays quite a bit of a role. I do have quite a bit of a opportunity to go out there and spend time with individuals. I've made some decent relationships with some, not so decent with others, unfortunately, and I've seen a lot of progress over the last six years that I've been here.
Well, from my perspective, good job.
Thank you, sir.
This, this is a good report.
Thank you, sir.
Looks to me like the mowing costs have gone up.
Mm-hmm. Everything's going up.
It used to look very attractive price, but now it's looking bad, so I'm sure people are just getting out there and doing their own.
Yeah.
That, we hope so. We hope so. That is, that is the goal.
Used to be that it would be cheaper for us to do it, and they would just pay the fine because it was cheaper.
Yes. In some cases, yes.
Yeah. As Dr. Riggsby's pointing out, it is getting a lot more expensive, but what always fascinates me is 90% of the people that show up on this list are folks that don't live, well, yeah, repeat, but they don't live in the community either. These are probably family trusts or family owners that just pay it on the property tax roll and don't even care.
I have a question. I know we talked about as a weed abatement, but I noticed that it includes litter or flammable waste. So that, does that include cars, trash, and things of that nature?
Yes, it does.
So if you have properties who have those items in front of them, you bring it to their attention, if they don't clean it, does that mean that you go in there and remove it?
Yes.
That includes a car?
It can. It can. Mostly not so much, but.
Yeah. I'm surprised there are actually no more on that list because I know there's lots of properties who have a lot of items that could be considered flammable.
You are correct, sir. Code enforcement does their part in taking care of things, and we, and the Fire Department takes their part of weed abatement.
Okay, at this point, I guess we would entertain a motion to move this council bill.
Mr. Mayor? We do have a speaker, and I think this is a public hearing item.
Open the public hearing. I don't have the list in front of me, so I'm not sure who to call up.
The speaker is Sammy Baydoun. I don't know if I'm pronouncing that correctly. My apologies.
Honorable Mayor and esteemed City Council members, my name is Sammy Baydoun, and I stand before you today representing MTB Inland Empire Properties LLC regarding invoice number 24001 for parcel 028422115. We are appealing the charges associated with this invoice, specifically the abatement and administrative fees. Maintaining a safe and aesthetically pleasing environment for our community is a priority we share with the City of Loma Linda. This is why we take proactive measures to ensure our property remains compliant with city codes. We contract the services of Rodriguez Disking, a licensed landscaper, to complete a thorough weed abatement on the property well before the designated due date. We have documented proof from Mr. Rodriguez that the abatement was meticulously completed. Unfortunately, we were caught off guard by invoice number 24001. At no point did we receive any official notification from the city outlining any violations requiring abatement beyond weeds. The lack of communication is particularly concerning, as timely notification would have allowed us to address the issue promptly and avoid any unnecessary penalties. Furthermore, the invoice itself lacks any supporting evidence such as pictures or detailed descriptions to clarify the nature of the additional violations the city claims we are responsible for. Transparency and clear communication are crucial for a smooth and collaborative relationship between property owners and the city. In this instance, the lack of both has resulted in this unexpected invoice. We believe a fair resolution would involve waiving both the abatement and administrative fees. We were proactive in our weed abatement efforts, demonstrably meeting our obligations in that regard. Additionally, the absence of any prior notification and supporting documentation regarding further violations makes the additional charges difficult to justify. We are committed to being responsible property owners and maintaining compliance with city codes. We are open to working with the city to understand any specific concerns and ensure the property remains up to code. We would appreciate the opportunity to discuss this matter further and reach a mutually agreeable solution. Thank you for your time. One more note to add, we did pay the fee. The check was mailed on July 3rd, so I'm not sure if it's been deposited by the city yet.
Thank you very much.
Is there a resolution here at this time?
Well, we aren't going to probably make a resolution at this moment, but we'll, we'll let the Fire Prevention address it and then probably get with you directly because what you're inferring is, is something further than a council decision. Number one, that's not agendized for us to really decide your case, but what you're talking about, you're throwing out legal things that probably are going to involve our attorney at some point. So I'd like to hear from Fire Prevention because I'm pretty sure it probably is documented, but also keep in mind, we don't need to get too far into the weeds if that's where that's going.
Okay.
Sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I have the invoice sent out to the gentleman here. I provided copies of the photos and the packet to the city clerk, and I'm not sure if Lynette was able to provide that for you. Although I do have the packet of information here, if you'd like me to pass it along to you, I have the invoice that was sent to this individual. I have the notice to clean property that was sent by us as a city, the invoice as, with the administrative costs and the abatement costs, and I have pictures of the waste and the weed abatement that was performed of the before and after at the parcel itself. So if you would like this, I can give it to you. If not, I have some copies provided.
I just have a quick question. It sounds like the gentleman read a letter. Did you submit the letter to the city manager, or is this the first time you bring it to our attention?
This is the first time I bring it to your attention.
Yeah, so somebody from the city will get in touch with you for whatever the process is, your appeal process, but that could not occur at this point because we don't have that agendized.
Should I be?
And I'll refer to the.
Yes, what I, what I might suggest, and I think it's the first one on the list, is that, is that you? Invoice to, that we, we pull that one from the rest, take care of the rest tonight, and then bring back, give staff an opportunity to perhaps look more into it, although it sounds like staff may have, and then we can address it at a future meeting.
Okay. Is there anything specific that we would need to pull from that? Because it's just the report that we're getting, though, right? There's no authorization for any.
Well, there's also the recommendation to adopt a council bill that places the lien that moves forward to place the liens on the property.
Okay. So if we have a motion, we could just have it to hold that?
Yeah, I move that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Dr. Riggsby?
Second.
Yeah, second.
Just want to clarify, so we're making the motion minus that particular property?
Okay.
And the second was by Dr. Daly. I think you got it, but just in case you didn't.
If I could, Council, really quickly, the, like you mentioned, the fee has been paid. I did take note of it today before our meeting, and it has been applied to the list of outstanding invoices.
Okay. If I can clarify, are you asking if I should stick around or I'll be contacted later?
Right now, somebody from the city can talk to you about how to communicate further.
Okay.
And, yeah, I'm sure before you get too far, somebody will, somebody will talk to you here.
Yeah, you be committed, mad. Okay. Sure.
We just, we have to be careful because, you understand what I'm saying? You're coming in, you're saying you're trying to appeal this, but this isn't the correct forum. There's steps you have to go through. It might ultimately end up here at a council level at some point, so that's why we cannot be directly involved in any discussion or talking about it.
Understood.
Correct?
Yes, and that one item was, was pulled, so that'll get discussed or you go through, either it gets resolved or you move forward with your appeal. We'll get you that information.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Excuse me. With the exception of the outstanding invoice for APN 028422115, motion is to receive the Weed Abatement Program for 2024, approve the accounting cost, and adopt Council Bill R. 2024, 20-24, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, California, adopting a report and statement of expenses for the Spring 2024 Weed Abatement Program and imposing a lien upon property for payment therefore. I will take your vote, please. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, moving on to 2C, which is the presentation of our proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. This was continued from June 25.
2B.
Oh, I'm sorry. I totally skipped over 2B. 2B, which is the joint meeting of the Council and Housing Authority regarding the fiscal year budget. So we're also going to open the Housing Authority at this point.
2B is the Budget Committee's recommendation.
So the Budget Committee has met and reviewed the budgets, and it's been a more interesting conversation than the previous, I don't know how many years that I've been on the Budget Committee, but it's been a lot. We have made a recommendation in writing to the city and the City Council, and I'm not going, unless you would like for me to read through the whole thing. Okay, I'm going to summarize it. So in summary, the city is a very well-run city and has met its budget obligations much better than the majority of the and has met its budget obligations much better than the majority of the cities in California. We commend the city leadership as well as the city employees for an outstanding job that they have done. And they have continued to make improvements. We are very concerned about a number of things going forward. And we would recommend not only doing a one-year budget, but a several-year budget because of these concerns. But the concerns are, have to do with math, which is matching revenue to expenses. And as the expenses grow, the revenue has to grow. And our observation is, is that expenses are growing faster than the revenue. And so we recommend that additional revenue, sources of revenue be looked at, and it needs to be acted on fairly soon because it will, is, the city runs very lean, and as the costs of everything goes up, the revenue is not going up as fast. And so we actually do believe that there will be a couple of years down the road, negative budgets, if we do not increase the revenue. Or we don't believe that there's a lot of ways to decrease the costs unless you're ready to start decreasing services. And we also believe that a lot of education needs to occur from the city council and, and the city to the citizens so that they start to understand that the costs are increasing faster than the revenue. And that would give them the opportunity to appropriately increase the revenue. And it needs to be really based upon what the projections would be for the city over the next two to three years. And whatever that dollar amount is, is what you need to have as a goal is to increase your revenues. Where the other big item is the CalPERS and unfunded liabilities. The city has done more than almost any other city in the state and has paid that down significantly. But given the challenges, we recommend that that not be paid down any further. And that we have to address the revenue and expenditure disconnect first. And if enough revenue, and that could be part of the long-term plan, is to increase the revenue enough to start to pay that down. But it needs to be communicated to the public and because eventually they do end up having to pay for everything.
I know we had a budget workshop a couple of months ago, and you were there, a couple of us were there. What are your opinions in terms of some of the things that we should do that are more exigent to potentially get us out of this?
Well, there's a number of items that can be looked at. I mean, increase in the number of businesses. I mean, we've had an increase in hotels. That's actually helped the budget significantly. But there's other businesses that would love to come here but don't because of either drive-through or no alcohol or some of the other different regulations that the city has. And, you know, there's other things to generate, I mean, you know, signage, the city could own signage. If you drive up through towards Beaumont, you can see the city of Yucapa has put up several signs, and that actually generates revenue for them. There is a capital expenditure, but the payback is pretty reasonable. There's sales tax, and I'm not a big advocate of sales tax. But if it's based upon the actual numbers that are needed, and I would be, you know, it's easier to, to sell. Other than that, you know, the new buildings and developments that come in, we don't believe that, they do generate additional revenue, but we actually believe that there would be more costs associated with, than the actual revenue that they generate. So you end up having to go to something other, whether it's sales tax, more business tax. I mean, it's, it's not an easy solution. And I could talk about cost of living and it's understated and why it's understated. I mean, it's, it's my hobby is, is to understand the cost of living and the dynamics of our monetary system. But those costs are real. And, you know, there are other ways to address this. There's classes that I've taught that teach people how to live a better life on less money. And there's expectations. Expectations need to be addressed as well because the reality is, the math doesn't work. And it's going to maybe not hit this year, but over the next three years, it, it can be a major problem for the city.
One of the things that we, we talked about at length at that budget workshop, and I wish all of the council had been there, was how we have made things work in the last several years, and that was by eliminating positions and taking that workload and adding it to employees, existing employees. Do you have any thoughts on any of that?
Yeah, and it is a additional, I mean, it's just another thing is that, you know, if, if key employees that are doing two to three jobs retire, the city will be faced with the option of either reducing services or, you know, hiring additional employees to fill those positions. And again, you know, as the rev, if the revenue doesn't increase, the city needs to understand that positions and the way that we're currently doing business will have to change. I mean, it's nice to think that you could just pass something. You cannot. I mean, eventually, the city is in a great position, and it does have reserves. But the reserves will disappear over a short period of time. So, you know, it's, reserves are there for emergencies, not really, we don't believe that they should be used for operations. And if they are, it should be limited to a one-year period.
Any other questions from the council? Any of you that, Mr. Repeskoe, since you weren't able to make the budget workshop?
I'll comment.
Appreciate your comments, Gary.
Do I need to make a recommendation that the budget be approved or not? I said, is the budget going to be voted on? So would you like, this is our recommendation that the budget be approved?
Gary, what do you think? You know, I, I trust you implicitly with money stuff, and you and I have had many conversations about the state of the world and some of the things that are out of our control.
Well, as bad as it is, this is probably as good as it's going to get over the next few years. Because I, the revenue, I mean, everybody knows that costs are increasing. And so, am I thrilled with this year's budget? No. But I actually think it's become more and more difficult over the next several years. And the solution to that is, I don't like the solution of cutting services. The solution to that is to increase your revenues. And that's not something the budget committee could do. That's something that collectively the city and, and leadership and city employees.
I hope you're gonna, you're gonna stick around. I know we've got some discussion to have on a couple of those ideas that could potentially help with our, with our budget shortfalls. I don't know if you care to give your opinion on those or what, what you think, but.
Well, I actually believe that it's all of the above, and the things that were discussed in the workshops, all of them need to be addressed. I think that we need to proactively go after new businesses and talk and explain. My guess is most people in the city do not understand the challenges that, that the city faces, but with some education they can. So I think that we should look at a sales tax, and that's why we feel it was important to do it, you know, a several-year budget so that we could project what the additional costs are. And there's still a bunch of those costs that are unknown at this point. But whatever those costs are, some of that can be addressed by some form of a sales, additional sales tax. So we act, I actually believe that it's all of the above. Because you probably aren't going to get them all. But you ought to try.
Well, thank you. I know it's difficult to get up here, and I know I have, I have personal beliefs and opinions on things. And then I also know kind of the realities of the world and what we're faced with. And sometimes those are, those don't always, they're not always congruent. And to make those decisions, it's, it's hard.
Yep. But, but there is also, I mean, I personally, I would come and I would teach a class to anybody who wanted to attend on how to make your money go further. Because truly, if, if you don't control your costs, you'll get to the point where there will be jobs lost. And so, you know, there's always a balance between increasing your income and eventually losing your job. And, you know, I'd be happy to help people learn about how you could be rich like me. And I make probably less than almost anybody else here.
One other thing I'm going to ask you, and, and your choice to answer it or not, but as part of the budget committee, you're a volunteer that willingly comes and looks at this, and we have a pretty unique system where our city manager works with the budget committee, group of residents and stakeholders here. Do you see anything in our budget where you see any money that could be hidden or any art, or ulterior motives or any other things that have been maybe quietly accused around that, that this, this is anything but what it is?
I think it is extraordinarily tight budget in comparison to other cities. No, and in fact, there's areas that probably should be more funded, such as replacement vehicles and equipment and things like that that we don't necessarily always fund. But, I mean, I think everybody knows what the cost of a new fire truck is. And, you know, the budget isn't large enough to, if there was a big accident and destroyed, like the ladder truck or something like that, I mean, that, that wipes out a huge portion of the reserves of the city. So I, I have not seen anything in particular where I could think the city could cut. I really believe that the majority of it is revenue.
All right, any further questions from the council or the budget committee?
The, the last comment I'll make is that we often tend to look outside and cost of living is, is an interesting challenge, and it, it is real. But as they say, you have to remember and compare yourself to the rest. And, you know, they could all take a, and make what I make, and the city would have extra money. But, you know, most people aren't willing to do that, but there's, there is a huge opportunity. If you learn on how to live a little bit differently, that the people of the city can actually have better or maintain the quality that they currently have. And I know this is, is a very difficult time because, you know, I would like to retire. And I know what the, it's, the cost of living is really the, the reduction in value of money. And so all the money that I've saved in my life, the value of it goes down by what inflation is every year. And so it's a fascinating time. I think this city's in a better position, as I say, than, than most cities. But it is, for the city, for this state, and for this country, a very interesting time from a budget perspective. Because if you understand math, you got to understand that this isn't going to work long-term. And most, most people don't want to actually look at it, but it's a, it's a real problem. So I wish I had something better to end on, but, but the good thing is, there are opportunities to increase revenue. We just need to change a few things.
Well, I hope you were able to stick around for a little bit so you can continue to weigh in with us as we talk about it. Thank you, sir. Okay, so that was the budget committee's recommendations. Now on to 2C.
Mr. Mayor, we have a speaker who wanted to speak on the weed abatement item that I didn't have registered. A general, I didn't get his name if you want to.
All right, sir. We'll, we'll go back to that so you can come on up. We, I apologize. We went to this digital system a while back, and so, and then we've been enforcing the no speaker slips, so I can't, I'm supposed to be able to pull them up, right, the names? And I can't do it, so.
Matt said he motioned for me to come up. I didn't see any motion. He didn't say anything to me, so.
He should have just rushed, rushed the stage.
Okay, I apologize that, for that.
All right, sir, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Larry Veris. I've been a member of this community for 42 years. We, we, my wife and I shop at local stores. My wife was a nurse at Loma Linda Medical Center, OB nurse. I have two, a niece and nephew who graduated from the, the medical, for the, for the medical program, and they're both practicing medicine now. And I have a grandson who's at, at the Loma Linda Academy, who I support in every way. And when you're grandkids, you support them in every way, if you know what I mean. Anyway, I'm a 108-gallon platelet donor for, for cancer, leukemia, and transplant children. And I was on television a few years ago when I did that. And I'm one of the highest platelet donors for the Children's Hospital. I did receive a flag from the US Congress, and that flag flew over the Capitol the day I gave my 100th gallon. So the United States government and Congress gave me a nice reward for doing that. I was an owner in my own company here for 30 years. When I had my company, I did a lot for the fire department. Gene, at the time, was the, was the fire chief. I did a lot for him, making up hoses and things that he needed for the fire department. I did a lot for the people in the city yards. They were always having problems with hoses, and they would come in and we would fix their hoses. And I never charged anybody for doing that. Loma Linda University, the, the hospital did a lot of business with me, especially in the power plant where they have the jet engines down below, and we made a lot of hoses for the, for the jet engines. So I taught management seminars at both the university hospital and East Campus. And I sold my company in 2010, and I retired, but I was continuing to teach college, and I taught college for 47 years. And I retired on May the 2nd of this year. So I'm newly retired, two months retired. So I own two very valuable pieces of, of real estate here in the city of Loma Linda, plus my home up off of Beaumont Avenue. And I own those pieces of property. And one of the, one of the pieces of property has been designated as an emergency center in case there's a, in case there's a, a bad earthquake. A lot of the, a lot of the buildings around here would crumble. My building, they felt, would not crumble, so it's going to be an emergency center where they can bring water, and they can bring food, and they can bring things that people might need in case of an emergency. So I work with the city on doing that. For a while, I had a truck rental business on the property next door, and the truck rental business did very well for me. People from the, from the university were renting trucks all the time. The contractors that came into my business were renting trucks all the time. And the city came and told me that I was in violation of code enforcement. So I came over and talked to them. I said, where am I in violation of code enforcement? And they couldn't really show me, but they said, we, you're, you're not in violation, but we don't have a code to cover you. So after a while, I just gave up the, the rental of the, the trucks, which netted me about, netted me about $5,000 a month. So I hated to lose that income, but I did that and just shut it down. I partnered with Verizon to put a cell tower on my piece of property. So my piece of property, my two pieces of property are, as you come off the, off the freeway on the Anderson-Tippecanoff ramp, you'll see the hose company, and then you'll see the cell tower. And those are both my pieces of property. Well, we had a lot of problems with, with the homeless. Some of the homeless were living inside my property, and I couldn't get rid of them. And they were living actually inside that cell tower enclosure. So I talked to the police department, and the police department couldn't do anything. I talked. I talked to the fire department, and the fire department couldn't do anything. So finally, the police said, "Well, put a no press, no trespassing sign up and see if you can get rid of them." So I tried to do that, and it didn't do any good, because they stayed and they lived inside the cell tower, and I couldn't get them out of there. I have tried to do other things with my property there over the years, and every time I come into code enforcement, they said, "We don't have a code for that. We don't know what you can do." And I tried to put a, a storage unit on the property last month, and I asked code enforcement, "Can I put a piece, can I put a, you know, one of those, one of those storage units on my piece of property?" And they said, "Well, we don't have a code for that, so you'll probably have to build a permanent one." And I said, "I don't want a permanent one. I just want a temporary one." So I wasn't able to complete that either. So I've had, I've had problems with that. The homeless became so bad over there that one of the, one of the homeless groups put a tent directly behind my building, up against the fence that goes up to the freeway off-ramp. Well, while they were cooking, the barbecue blew up, burnt the back of my building, caused $21,000 worth of damage, and I had to cover that. Insurance covered part of it, but again, nobody would help me. So finally, I went to Caltrans, and Caltrans came out and they said, "This is a real problem." Because the, the homeless were making a mess from about where the Del Taco is, all the way down to where the, the piano place is. And there was clothing all over, there was human waste all over, and it was just a mess back there. They continued to do damage to my property. I couldn't get any help from the fire department, I couldn't get any help from the police department. So I had to pay a lot of those, out of, those expenses out of pocket, because I didn't want to turn them into my insurance. Because right now, you know, insurance companies, they'll cancel you if they can, and you can't get insurance again. So I had to cover a lot of those expenses. So it's cost me a lot of money over the years to do that. So, I have a, I have a gardener who does my home. And at the end of every month, he leaves my home and he goes over to my property. And he does the property, he cleans it up. Now, when I put the cell tower in, planning says, "Well, we want you to make that nice. We don't want you to just put the cell tower in there. We'd like to have you put some, you know, the, the, the meandering sidewalks, whatever you call them, the, the sidewalks that not, aren't straight but are curved, meandering sidewalks." And then they said, "We'd like to have you put a green spot in the back, so people can see it." Well, nobody can see it when you come off the freeway. All you see is a couple of treetops. So I did that, spent all that money on that, and what it turned out being was a weed garden. So I still have the property there. There's some palm trees there, and the weeds grow. So every month, when Domingo comes and gets his check, I give him the money to go clean out my property. Well, I got a notice. So I went to the, went to the fire department, I said, "Look, you gave me a notice that I have to clean this up, but it's already been cleaned up." They said, "Well, when, when you, when we inspected it, it wasn't cleaned up." I said, "Well, it's cleaned up every month." He goes over there. So they went back and checked, and they said, "Sure enough, it's been cleaned up." All right? So I was good there. Recently, I got another notice. And that notice included $210 for abatement cost and $147 for administrative charges. So I called and talked to Matt Dingman, and I said, "Look, that's been cleaned up. It's cleaned up every month. So maybe by the time you look at it, and until Domingo cleans it, some weeds have had a chance to grow." So, he went and checked it, and he says, "Yeah, it's been cleaned up." But he said, "We can offset the $147 administrative charges, but we cannot, we cannot offset the $210, $210 abatement cost, because we've already paid that bill. Now you have to go to the city council." So, here I, here I am, trying to explain my situation to you, tell you all the things I've done with the community over the years, and...
Yes, sir. So, so here's, here's the problem again, is that there's a process to go through an appeal. There's a legal process. And in, in the, and there's several layers and steps. And the ultimate top layer could be this council, but it can't be tonight. So you have to go through those other steps, because we could, in a sense, sit as a jury over your case at some point. And so, you're, it's unfortunate, just like that other gentleman, there's going to have to be a process you have to go through, and so you'll have to start that with city employees. And if, if you're still not happy as that works, I'm pretty sure that you'll, they'll, they'll work it out before we get to that point. But, but the process is there, and then as you appeal different levels, it could end up here as the final arbiter of, of this situation, but it's not something we can address tonight.
Okay. Well, the one thing I would like to say is, they sent me the, the notice, and it was already cleaned up by the time they sent me the notice, the first time. The second time, they didn't send me a notice to clean up. So I talked with Matt Dingman, and he says, "You know, you're right. I checked with the, I checked with the contractor. Yours, yours is the only one that they missed sending a cleanup notice to." So I didn't even get a notice, even though the work was already done. So, in the meantime...
I'll, I'll direct you over here to staff, who I think they're going to direct you back over to fire prevention at some point. And however that process it goes, I'm sure we have an established process for that. It's, I'm sure it's in our city code. And hopefully, it'll be handled, and you won't have to come back here, but at some point you could, and so that's why we can't.
Well, it's, it's not the matter of the $200. It's just a matter that it ticks me off.
I, I understand.
I've been going through this, I've spent thousands and thousands of dollars on that piece of property. Everybody in this area benefits from that cell tower, because it's such a strong signal that everybody's cellphone bounces off that.
And I'm sure the homeless that have their phones sitting down there benefit from it as well.
Well, the only way I got them out of there is when I went and I told them, "See that tower up there? It's full of, it's full of energy. If you stay there too long, it's going to stop your heart." And this guy without teeth looked at me, and he says, "You really think so?" And I said, "Well, I know so." So I kind of scared them out of there, but then they went to the back of my building and they burned it up. So, another thing that I might say, as long as I'm here, Redlands Boulevard, if you stand at my property and cars leave the intersection at Anderson and Redlands Boulevard going west, by the time they hit my building, which is only, what, an eighth of a mile down the road, they're doing 60, 60, 70 miles an hour. Something needs to be done. It's unbelievable. And up on Beaumont, where I live, they race all the way up, up and down all night. So, I put up with this stuff, and now I got to put up with a $200 charge of weed abatement. So, that's my story.
All right. I, I am sure that the city will be able to help you. Jarb?
Okay. All right.
It, it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a little anecdotal here. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of city employees, and so, our city manager, who wears five different hats, he, he will figure out the appropriate steps, but I'm sure we have some process, and, and hopefully it doesn't end up back here that gets taken care of.
Okay. Well, thank you for listening, and there, there are issues that we need to take care of, so. And Redlands Boulevard, you need to do something about the traffic there. It's really a hazard. It's a real problem.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, the only thing is, we've, we've approved the list of liens, which...
But his wasn't, I don't think his was on there, was it?
Yeah, his second one. His second one.
He's the second one.
I guess I was thrown because it didn't have a local address.
Second one.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, you're right. You're absolutely right. So do we need to open that back up? Yeah?
Probab, probably.
Fair enough. The original maker of the motion willing to amend?
Yes, I, I move that we remove him like we did the other one.
All right. And the second?
Second.
Same second, so Madam Clerk will just need to revote on that.
Yes. So motion to also remove item 281, assessed parcel number 0281-091-25 from the list of invoices that will be filed in the liens. Let me, sorry, let me, uh...
You have to go back in and open it back up, and or do you want to just...
I'll do a roll call.
Okay.
So I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Spencer Wong?
Support.
Councilmember Papezku?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per Tim Daly?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry about all the confusion. Okay. We will now get into item 2C, which is the presentation of the proposed budget. And we'll, at some point, have to figure out why we can't pull up the speaker slips or the names. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Sonia Fabella. I'm Finance Director for the City of Loma Linda. Tonight's presentation is to review in a summarized format the fiscal year 2425 budget presented for council for adoption. We will cover the general fund, as it's a key operating fund for the city, and we will review the fund, the fund unassigned, assigned, committed fund balance. We will be reviewing the city as a whole, including enterprise, special revenue, debt service, and capital funds. And lastly, we will review the Loma Linda Housing Authority Fund. The slide shows the top seven revenues in the general fund. The top revenue for the city is sales tax. It makes up 23% of the city's total, total general fund revenue of 26.7 million. For 2425, the projected sales tax amount provided from HDL is 10.2 million, and the abatement is estimated to be 4.9, I'm sorry, 4.1 million. Therefore, it is shown here net at $6,157,800. Three out of the four agreements for the sales tax abatement are scheduled to end in 2035. Motor vehicle license fees are received twice per year, and for fiscal year 2425, there's a projected increase of over 8% from fiscal year 2324. Property taxes increase 2% each year. However, this category also includes past due and residual balance from the dissolution of the RDA, and these have been coming in higher. Therefore, we are projecting a 5% increase in this category. Next is overhead. Overhead is charged by the general fund to other funds to cover, recover administrative costs. For 2425, there's a projected drop of 31%, as not as many projects are budgeted in fiscal year 2425. In fiscal year 2324, the bulk of the overhead was due to the building of the 1.6 million gallon reservoir and water line. The contract with Loma Linda Medical Center for Law Enforcement increases the same amount as the sheriff's contract. This year, the sheriff's contract increased by 3.2%. However, included in the number is an estimated amount for reimbursement of fuel and auto maintenance. Franchise fees, franchise fees are projected to increase by 4%. And refuse service charges shown, and show an estimate of 3% increase, which is the average estimated for all service types. Refuse charges are analyzed and increased each year based on the CPI. The analysis will be brought to council within the next month for your review. This slide shows the general fund expenditures by department. Administration shows an increase of 276,000 or 15% due mainly to two things. A position of Assistant City Manager slash Economic Development Director is being added, and an increase in professional services for a class and compensation study, as well as a recruitment, as well as recruitment services for the Assistant City Manager slash Economic Development Director position. General Government shows a small decrease of 18,100 due to an estimated savings in several areas, including insurance contributions to nonprofits, legal services, and professional services. However, it is important to note that the transfer out to assist the land maintenance district increased by 138,700 for a total of 258,700 for 2425. The police contract with the sheriff department increased by 200,000, or an equivalent of 3.2%, shown 3% here. The fire department shows a decrease of 446,200, or 4%. Every staff, every year, staff projects and budgets 500,000 due to the unknown of the fire season. At mid-year, this amount is revised, and the revenue for mutual aid reimbursements is adjusted. For fiscal year 2425, staff decided to budget 1 million to be conservative and realistic since the OT amounts have reached 1.1, 1.9 million in the previous two audited fiscal years, 22, fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 23. For fiscal year 2324, the revised amount was 1.3 million. The other decrease is in vehicle purchases for 2324. 559,000 was budgeted for the purchase of equipment, such as an all-terrain vehicle, portable radios, and installation of roll-up doors, as well as the refurbishment of the 2006 pumper truck. The department will experience increases that consume the savings, such as an increase in insurance coverage and an increase in benefits due to unfunded liability payments. In fiscal year 2324, the city did not have to contribute to the unfunded PERS liability due to PERS investments doing so well at the end of fiscal year 2021, and causing a super funded position for a very short time. Unfunded liability increased once more, when PERS decided to reduce the discount rate from 7.15% to 6.9%. Next is community development. Community development increased 21% or about 193,000 due to the projected increases in costs associated with the contract for plan checks. The company the city contracts with for these services gets 65% of the revenue collected for building permits collected. Fiscal year 2425, building permits revenue is projected to be 546,000. Public Works is decreasing by 403,000 from fiscal year 2324, mainly due to vehicles and equipment budgeted, but obviously, budgeted and purchased, but obviously not budgeted in 2425, as well as a decrease in building repairs and maintenance. The proposed general fund balance is recapped in this slide. Although staff try to present before you, as it has been done in every year until 2324, an operational balanced budget, it is necessary to cover the negative change in fund balance in the amount of 407,000 for fiscal year 2425 from fund balance reserves. The current adjusted unassigned budget is projected to end the year with 15 million of unassigned fund balance for fiscal year 2324. With the proposed revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2425, there is a projected decrease of 407,000, therefore projecting 14.6 million of unassigned fund balance. The assigned amount of 1 million, or, I'm sorry, the restricted amount of 1,250,000 is for vehicle replacement, and the committed amount of 2 million is restricted as rainy day reserves. Amounts are to remain the same with a total fund balance of 17.8 million for fiscal year 2425. It is important to note that this deficit is small compared to what it would be if the city was fully staffed and could afford projects that had to be removed in order to come close to balancing the budget. Rising costs in, in essential items such as contractual agreements, materials, equipment, fuel, et cetera, makes it necessary to point out that it is becoming difficult to continue balancing the general fund expenditures with revenue that is being collected. The proposed general fund balance is recapped in this slide. This includes 3, 3,250,000 for committed and assigned fund balance. If the current revenue streams continue with a 2% to 3% increase per year on a very, on the various sources, and assuming a modest 3% increase in expenditures each year, the deficit will still continue to grow as expenditures will still outpace the revenue growth. still continue to grow as expenditures will still outpace the revenue growth. If the consistent revenue streams do not increase, and we continue to rely on the one-time revenue such as grants or refunds and reimbursements, the reserves will be depleted by around 2035, or perhaps sooner, as the situation changes and costs increase. These are a list of unfunded positions that were not included in the budget, but are absolutely necessary for the city to, to have. In the years past, the general fund expenditures have been reduced in order to balance the budget by reducing or not hiring important positions. The lack of these positions have had consequences that have not been obvious to our constituents because operations and maintenance have been maintained as best as possible. However, it is evident, excuse me, that Loma Linda is operating at a much slower pace than neighboring cities due to the lack of funding to be fully staffed. In fiscal year 2425, the city was operationally, operating at full staff. Sorry, if in fiscal year 2425, the city was operating at full staff, an estimated 1.7 million would be needed to fund these positions. For fiscal year 2526, due to the growing population, it would be necessary to add additional maintenance workers and engineering GIS tech. It is estimated the new fire station and community center will be completed by 2526. However, staff is needed to operate such facilities. And it's estimated 2526 or 2627. Please note that these amounts are rough estimates of the positions' salaries and benefits. A class and comp study would need to be completed to get accurate compensation amounts for each position. This is a list of unfunded projects. The items listed here on this slide, specifically the ones under fiscal year 2425, are projects that were originally included in the budget, however, they were removed from the budget to attempt to get closer to the balance, to the operationally balanced budget. As mentioned in the earlier slide, when the fire station and the new community center are completed, estimated in 2627, equipment and furniture will be needed. These numbers are also rough estimates, as with rising costs, the amounts will likely increase by then. The amount of unfunded expenditures, which includes salaries, equipment, furniture, legal and professional services, equals 4,059,100. If the unfunded positions and projects were included in the budget, the change in general fund reserves would look somewhat like this. With the green, the boxes in green signal an operation, operating shortfall. The pink show a revenue, and then the blue signify expenditures. With the current revenue stream with the projected 2% to 3% increase covering the current expenditures, plus the unfunded projects and positions, also with a 3% projected growth over a 10-year period, shows a depletion of the current fund balance reserves by 2029. The following two slides will show revenues and expenditures this council has adopted during the fiscal year, and what is currently posted in the system. General Fund shows a decrease in revenues of 114,400, which is a combination of increases and decreases through all revenues. The large increase in capital funds with an estimated 3.2 million increase over the projected 2324 revenue. The estimated growth is attributed to one-time development impact fee revenues of several projects, the majority being in the current development in Area D. The projects that are potentially coming in the following year will be homes built by Lennar, and then a hotel that's in construction, as well as senior living project. During the last water and sewer fee study, an increase in sewer rates was not shown as necessary to cover projected expenses for the next five years. The change of 3.8% increase shown in this chart is due to Samarino sewer fees that are currently a pass-through. The Water Fund shows a 2.8% increase in water sales revenue. The Loma Linda Connected Communities, despite efforts to increase the number of accounts subscribed, the revenue is projected to remain almost the same at, as projected for fiscal year 2324. And lastly, other funds, which include special revenue, grant, and debt service funds, shown an increase in revenues of 5.7% or 236,000. The increase is due to a grant from San Manuel Band of Mission Indians to purchase the electric cardiograms, electric cardiogram monitors of 300,000. Increase in transfers in to the land maintenance district in the amount of 138,700, offset with the decrease in City BG funding in the amount of 167,900. These are the proposed expenditures for all city funds by category. The general fund shows a decrease of 197,600 in expenditures compared to the revised budget for '24. The Sewer Fund expenditures increased by over $1 million due to the following reasons. Increase of benefits as the unfunded liability payment due to PERS this year versus none last year. Sewer master plan, a total of 400,000, which is shared with the sewer capital fund. An increase in the sewer pass-through, which is proportionate to the increase in the revenue we saw in the prior slide. And an increase in overhead due to the additional project, project costs just mentioned. Loma Linda Connected Community expenditures have been budgeted at the same level of the 1.2 million seen here. 569,100 is for accrued interest expense that will not be paid as there is not enough revenue being generated to cover a payment. Therefore, that's a non-cash transaction. The Water Fund expenditures show an increase of 585,800 due to the increase of insurance for workers' comp and general liability, as well as for purchasing a new generator for the well sites. The majority of that is for the new generator. Capital Funds show a large drop in expenditures, and the majority of that is the cost associated with the building of the new 1.6 million gallon reservoir and water line on Boma Avenue and Nevada Street that took place in fiscal year 2324. Other funds are the special revenue, debt service, grant funds, and grant funds, which increased by 508,000. Some of the, some of the larger projects taking place in '2425 are California street widening paid by Mejari, the purchase of the ECG monitors paid by San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, and the increase of the landscape maintenance district contract, which is 300, it increased from 168,400 to 322,600. In total, for all funds, the expenditures saw a reduction of 13%. This slide shows the change in fund balance for all funds, including the general fund. In total, the revenues are projected to come in higher than the expenditures by 3.6 million. As explained earlier, this is mainly due to the increase in projected development impact fees, which are one-time revenues. This slide shows a comparison of the beginning fund balance for all city funds from the adjust, from the adjusted in fiscal year 2324 for the proposed, to the proposed in fiscal year 2425. 45.9 million is the estimated beginning fund balance based on the revised budget at mid-year, with a net expected positive change in fund balance of 3.6 million. The ending balance in total for all funds shows 49.5 million. And lastly, this is the Housing Authority. Not much change is projected for fiscal year 2425. The revenues being received are loan repayments on the housing loans. Repayments are a set amount with a variation on the breakdown between interest and principal. The expenditures remain the same each year, with the, with the exception of a slight increase in professional services, as the contract amount is projected to increase by 2,000. In conclusion, I would like to add that in addition to our usual conservative revenue projections, staff has incorporated estimates due to the current economic challenges and world events, and has prudently proposed expenditures. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2425 includes 14.6 million in unassigned fund balance, 1.25 million in assigned, and 2 million in the committed fund balance reserve, for a total of 17.9 million general fund reserve balance. The general fund shows a deficit of 407,000 that will be covered by the reserves. Future costs continue to rise, and without an increase in revenues, the general fund will continue to see fund balance deficits with the reserves being depleted by 2035. Unfunded projects of 4.4 million are necessary, but they have not been added to the budget as they are not enough, there are not enough revenues to cover the costs. If added, the projected annual deficit would deplete fund balance by 2029. And lastly, I would like to thank all departments and staff for their contribution to the 2425 budget. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Sonia. Questions?
Sonia, I have one question on your unfunded projects. When you say unfunded projects, can you describe, does that include the staff positions as well? Can you go back to that slide?
Yes, I have two slides. One is unfunded positions.
Uh huh.
And one is unfunded projects.
Okay.
These are the positions, there are 17 of them, and they're broken up by the fiscal year. So really, right now, we need 1.4 million in positions that have not been added. For 2425, we anticipate in, in needing, due to additional growth in the city, an engineering tech slash GIS employee, a maintenance, and two maintenance workers. And then for fiscal year 2627, we anticipate needing three fire captains, a park rec manager, and a park rec staff for the community center that's, well, for the fire station and the community center that is scheduled to be completed in 2627.
So what's the, what's the three fire captains? Is that who will run the station, the third station?
That would be for the third station, the one that's going to be completed in Area D.
So how many employees would be in that third station?
From what I was told, we would only need three fire captains, but I think Boucher would be willing to explain that a little bit further.
So the three fire captains would be just a Band-Aid to get us started and be able to open up the doors for Station 3. It would essentially down our squad in this station and increase the staffing to open up an engine at Station 3. Now ultimately, we would need three positions, a fire, firefighter, paramedic, an engineer, and a captain on all three shifts, so a total of nine positions long-term.
Okay.
That's moving the squad over and turning it into an engine.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
A, a point of clarification, and I'm not even sure who'd ask. As, over the years, as we have discussed the development of Tearing Out the Orange Groves and the development of Area D, the fire station, third fire station, has been part of that planning all along. The point of clarification I need is, my understanding is, we had built that in, but I do not recall that, I guess where my confusion is. We included that in the planning. I do not recall any motion, any vote to make three fire stations. And in fact, my understanding was that this would become a permanent residence for what is Fire Station 2, which is a temporary kind of facility. So I'm not promoting one side or the other, I'm asking for clarification on what's our status, because this budget is assuming that we're working towards three full fire stations in the city, correct?
Well, I, I don't think we've talked about how we're going to do that at all, and I don't, I don't think there was any discussion about closing anything or any of that stuff officially. What we have talked about was the deal that was made for that land was we got a free fire station out of it. So that's, that's 100% that's known and certain. We also know that with the growth of the city, because we've added all of those homes in that community there, plus we're adding the stuff out in San Timoteo Canyon, I mean, we're adding thousands of residents. So at some point, I think it's, it's been talked about, not, we haven't voted on it, but we've talked about there's going to be a need for that coverage. And, I mean, this isn't a whole other, it's not really related to the budget, but that, well, that, that, that temporary station down where it's at now, I personally am not in favor of closing that. I am in favor of, I wish at some point we could make that a permanent building.
But, but my point is not whether we should have two, or three, or five, or one fire station, that's not my issue. My issue is, my impression from, I've spent lots of time with the budget. We've had meet, multiple meetings, including the one we just got out of. And I, I think at some point soon, we need to kind of congeal around what, what is the permanent plan that we are working towards? We just had a report from the Budget Committee telling us we're running out of money, and now we're talking about expanding city government, and, and I just want clarification.
Well, I, I think, I think this is, I mean, there's nothing concrete in any of this. This is what staff is telling us that we're going to need at those next benchmarks. So, right now, in '2425, I mean, we're, we're looking at engineering tech, maintenance worker, and Assistant City Manager, and, and these are just staff recommendations of benchmarks, when we hit these specific budgets, as the city continues to grow, that's what collectively they're telling us they think they need. I don't, I don't know that we have to get into the minutia of all that.
No, my biggest question was the, all of the city workers that we don't currently have funded, like the 1.7 is more concerned.
That, I am absolutely with you on that. My, my concern is, over the last several years, what we've been doing to balance the budget is eliminating positions and taking work and putting more and more work on the existing employees. So I'm, I'm with the, the councilwoman, that we are, our more pressing issue is talking about what we're currently in. This is just, yeah, I don't want to say conjecture, because it's, I value its, its, its staff input that I highly value, that says, hey, by this time, based on the growth, this is where we should be, and so, but I don't know that that's official.
We have not had a robust discussion.
No.
About what are the assumptions, what are the, what are the requirements of the state? What are, at least not that I can recall being involved with, and it seems to me that as we make some difficult budget decisions, not just now, but in future years, we need to have a pretty clear set of assumptions on what our future planning is, so we know what we're trying to fund and agree to it.
100% I agree with you. That's, that's what goes back to the discussion that we've been trying to have for the last several months, is our, our, you know, our plan, our...
I think looking at the first, the first 10 positions up there, you know, that we have, that has nothing to do with the future, that's currently what we're not funding right now. We have those positions vacant. Jabs wearing six hats, you know, so we have a lot of people working multiple jobs, and we have to take that into account, because that is, it's part of the budget, but we're not funding that. So that's what, to me, is, when we show a final number of 400,000, I'm worried, because then I look and see, no, we have all of this that's, that's not funded.
And, and, and I agree with you. My point is, it's time to get in the weeds and be more specific in terms of what our future needs and priorities are, so that we can begin to make some budgetary decisions that are informed about the future. We, we've done really well with the past and the current, but now we've got some challenges in front of, in front of us right now, in addition to subsequent years. And, and I think it's time for us to really begin to get down to the nitty-gritty of strategic planning.
Yes.
Of what are the priorities, what are the, what are the essentials that there's, we have no options on, and what are optional, we would like to have them, but we can't afford them. That's my point.
So is there any other comments on the budget? So is there any other comments on the budget? Mr. City Manager, you want to add anything?
No, I request...
You cut out. I don't know if you want to turn that back here.
I'm sorry. The staff requests that City Council approve the next fiscal year 2425 budget, so we can operate tomorrow.
Okay. And for the record, we're approving a budget with a deficit. Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that item number 2J? This is just the presentation. I think we're going to get to the actual approval further down the list. Unless we jump to it now.
Yes, okay.
That is correct. The resolution is item 2J for the budget. So we're going to go through all these other budget items and then make the final motion for the budget.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, you're up.
Okay, so every year, we present to you the five-year capital improvement projects, and it's in the booklet that you have in front of you. This is the nice, brand-new, 1.6 million gallon reservoir at the South Hills. So, next slide, please. Okay, so the CIP is divided into the seven major categories. Include the fleet, the general building, park and rec, sewer, storm drain, street and street light, and water. And so this is potential funding source that we use to build these projects. For the fleet, for next fiscal year, oh, actually, this fiscal year, we already ordered for the water department, the loaders, and it's going to be built and delivered this fiscal year of 2425. It will cost us $300,000. Also, replace the flatbed truck that's already budget for the current fiscal year, and it's going to be delivered next fiscal year, which is fiscal year 2425. So the total for the fleet for next fiscal year is $480,000. Now, for the future years, is what we propose, and then we will come back to you later for the future years. General building, it's just routine maintenance. We plan to have, start doing design for the EV charging station, replace routine light bulb, city hall facility improvement, and the improvement to the library. Park, we plan to do tree planting. Every year, we do tree planting at Wears Park, and also art and public places, and the art and public places is funded for by park, I mean, by park development impact fee. Bailey Park, we plan to install a new pickleball court, and it's also paid for by the park development impact fee. Sewer, we plan to, tonight, if the City Council approved the budget, we will award a contract to install a new sewer pump station at Juanita Street to help upgrade the old one. And we also plan to do the sewer master plan to update the one that we did back in 1998. Storm drain, we only have one project, which is to put in the V ditch. It's a concrete that swells along the east side of Richardson Street. And pavement rehabilitation, we plan to do ADA ramps and sidewalk replacement. It's going to be funded by the County CDBG grant. Pavement rehabilitation by grind overlay, we do along the one in pink. Pavement rehab by Suri Seal is the area between Brenmar and Whittier, south of George Street. California Street widening project between north of Barton Road to tie to the existing curb and gutter and sidewalk that Lennar just completed. The project will be funded by the Measure I and the development impact fee. Mission Road widening will be just due to design between the missing section that Lennar Home is doing, and we have a private property that we're going to hopefully get the right of way, so we can widen that street. We plan to put in the solar street light adverse location, and that will be for the next fiscal year. Water projects, we plan to replace water meters, it's a routine, replace water valves. The big ticket item is to upgrade our SCADA system, which is the computer hardware and software that run the water system, upgrade the wells, and replace the pressure-reducing valve at Campus Street. Okay, that's a quick presentation. That'll be our project for next fiscal year.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, we can't take a motion on this one to approve the CIP project.
So we're going to take a motion on this separately from the budget?
It would be 2E.
Okay, I guess we'll entertain a motion.
No, this is the one that we just presented.
I move approval of the five-year capital improvement program as presented.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a first and a second.
Motion is to approve the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal year 2425 as submitted. I'll take your vote, please.
Yeah, mine is acting weird, too. Oh, yours just shot.
It's not working.
Dusty just went off.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote.
It went green.
I'm sorry. I'll take a roll call vote. Councilwoman Spencer Wong?
Support.
Councilmember Papesku?
Yes.
Councilmember Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, now item 2E.
Good evening once again. The following three items are required to be adopted with the budget. And so the first one is the 2425 adjusted appropriations limit, and it's also known as the GAN limit. And it refers to a set of state-level fiscal policies aimed at limiting government spending. It was introduced in the late 1970s by California politician Paul Gann and aimed to restrict increases in government expenditures to a formula based on population growth and inflation. Essentially, it caps how much state and local governments can spend each year, linking it to economic growth and population changes. And it also is established to ensure that cities are not spending, or are not overtaxing residents, and the limit is to ensure that we are not collecting more tax revenue than what we are spending. The change this year for 2425 yielded a 2.5 million increase to previous year's limit, raising it to 65.4 million. The tax revenue that is subject to the limitation is a total of 14 million, which means the city is 51.4 million below the limit. Okay, and once we do the resolutions, this will be adopted. The next one is item 2F. Oh, my apologies. This does require a resolution adoption.
So we should vote on this one now?
Yes, please.
This is a little confusing, I'll be honest with you. Okay. Do we have a motion, or any questions on this?
I'll go ahead and adopt Council Bill R-2024-18.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
First and a second.
Questions? Can you kind of, without looking at your notes, summarize, what exactly are we voting on here? I'm not quite clear.
It's an appropriations limit.
Appropriations from the state, from...
Yes, it was established by the state. All of the local government agencies, the state, the districts, they all have to establish this limit every single year, and it's just to assure citizens that we are not overtaxing them and that we are not spending less than what we are receiving in taxes.
And that's the report you just gave, is we're significantly below the threshold.
The city is 51.4 million below that limit.
Thank you.
Motion is to adopt Council Bill R-2024-18, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, California, adopting an amended city appropriations limit for fiscal year 2024-2025 in accordance with the provisions of Division 9 of Title 1 of the California Government Code. We'll take a roll call. Councilmember Spencer Wong?
Support.
Councilmember Papesku?
Yes.
Councilmember Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sonya, are you going to do the investment policy?
And the investment policy did not change from last year. I do intend to bring it back to you at a later date. I just did not have time to research and suggest another policy. But for now, this is the same as was adopted last year. Currently, the city, every year, has opted to do what is more the safest way of investment. So right now, the city invests in LEAF, and we transfer from LEAF to the city's main account for daily check runs that need to be covered.
Hey, real quick, before we get too far down the road here, I think it's important to remember, we just got our audit done recently, which obviously we have to have done every year, and that a separate outside audit firm has continually, including this year, praised us for our accounting and record-keeping and our investment policies, things like that, along this nature. So although I don't remember going through in detail like this, and this is great, it's just different than I think what we're normally used to in terms of our budget process. So, but it is important to remember that outside auditors have said we're doing the right things here.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I have no problem. I mean, our investment policy seems to be working, as far as I know. But you say we're anticipating some potential change in the investment policy?
Yes.
So if what we're doing works, what are we concerned about with change?
There's no concern. The only thing is, is that there's another investment fund comparable to LEAF that's called Camp. I need to research on it, but the interest rate is a little bit higher than what LEAF is offering.
And how long would that take? To do the research and figure out, are we going to, in other words, are we going to change this year or next year?
I definitely want to do it this year. I'm hoping by August, we can bring it back.
Okay. Because Gary's told us we need more revenue, and if this is a potential angle, then that sounds good. So this requires no action at this point, then?
But this is a council bill.
Oh, this is for the budget.
So, but it looks like we need to approve this separately as well?
All right.
Okay.
All right, I'll move that we renew the investment policy pending any recommendations for change.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second.
Motion is to approve the investment policy for fiscal year 2425. Councilmember Spencer Wong?
Support.
Councilmember Papesku?
Aye.
Councilmember Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the COPs Grant Expenditure Plan.
And the COPs Grant also has to come before you every single year to approve the expenditure plan that the city is recommending. Nothing has changed as far as the operations from last year, and the programs have not changed either. It is mainly to supplement the, it is to supplement the general fund and to help out and pay for the Sheriff's Service Specialist position, as well as some of the projects that she usually takes care of each year, like the Care Say No To Drugs campaign, the Red Ribbon Week, and then she also purchases materials and supplies for the three schools that are within Loma Linda. It also covers a little bit of cost for the Citizens Committee or Citizens Patrol.
Patrol, yeah.
And then...
A random dog just wandered in here.
And it also goes to fund the flock cameras.
Okay, so this is grant money we're spending, and we're not going to overspend it?
Correct.
I move it.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second for that.
Motion is to approve the spending plan for fiscal year 2425 for the Citizens Option for Public Safety Grant. Councilmember Spencer Wong?
Support.
Councilmember Papesku?
Aye.
Councilmember Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Now into the Wildland Fire Contract with CalFire.
I don't mind moving this item. Council Bill R-2024-20.
Okay, sounds good. We have a first.
Second.
And a second on that one. Madam Clerk.
Motion is to adopt Council Bill R-2024-20, a resolution to approve the Wildland Fire Protection Contract, number 3CA06941, between CalFire and City of Loma Linda for $107,254.21 for fiscal year 2425. Councilmember Spencer Wong?
Support.
Councilmember Papesku?
Yes.
Councilmember Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the radio contract, which is not just the fire department, correct? That's entire city. Is anybody presenting? I can present on it if you want me to. So we, well, this has to do with our dispatch contract with ConFire, correct?
Would you like me to answer questions on this?
Well, the way it's kind of presented, it says "radio contract," which I was thinking it was the county radio, but it's not. It's the ConFire piece.
No, it is actually the county radio.
The radio, so that it applies to the entire city, because...
So essentially, it's the exact same thing that we've been doing, it's just a refunneling of the funds, rather than going through ConFire and then to county. Now it just gets directly to county. So it's the exact same thing that we've always done.
Okay, interesting. All right, very cool.
Move approval.
All right. I was going to talk about it. It's interesting to me. The county's radio system is an enterprise-level funded system, and so it's run independent of the county budget, basically, and it's paid for by all the subscribers. And it's actually a pretty good system, where we all pay equally across the board, and it's very well-run, so I'm just proud of it. It's cool. Techy, geeky thing for me. Sorry. All right, we had a first?
Yeah, and a second.
And a second.
Okay, I have a question. What's the net budgetary impact? I don't see that in the report.
$34,000.
Okay, how does that compare with last year's budget? Or current budget? Is that an increase, a decrease? What's the net cost? This isn't a big budget. $34,000 is not a big budget item, but...
So I don't know the...
Gary's got my attention, so I'm getting picky.
So I don't know the actual increase in expenditure over the course of the year. I know it's the exact same cost that county would charge ConFire and ConFire would charge us. So I don't know if it's gone up or down over the last fiscal year, but I do know there's been no increased profit margins on either company's part.
I don't... I don't think it's gone up or down because they charge, the way they charge, they charge the same to the Sheriff's Department and everybody else. It's per radio. So if we haven't added any radios, then it's the exact same cost that we had last year. It's just a flat fee, and I don't know of those costs going up. Casey walked out, but she would have said something if she knew to. I don't think it went up because it hasn't changed.
It's not a huge item, but when we're talking about budget, I'm...
No, I understand. That's good. Okay. Okay, do we need to vote on this also?
Motion is to appropriate the suggested allocation of thirty-four thousand for the radio contract with San Bernardino County Innovation and Technology Department and approve the contract. Councilmember Spencer Wong?
Support.
Councilmember Papesku?
Yes.
Councilmember Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we're now finally at two J.
I'll move to adopt Council Bill R dash two zero two four dash nineteen.
Thank you, sir. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Rixby is the second. Any comments? Ready to take a vote?
Motion is to adopt Council Bill R dash twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, California, adopting the final budget for the City of Loma Linda for the fiscal year commencing July one, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Councilmember Spencer Wong?
I want one bit of clarification. I'm sorry. The Councilman Rixby was faster on moving it than I was on asking my question.
Sorry.
And I'm supportive of this. So this is kind of pulling everything together, voting the budget in. I think that in the interest of transparency, we... The mayor indicated that it's a deficit budget, balanced budget, but we haven't said how much. And I think they have a right to have some sense of that.
It's four hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Say it again.
Four hundred and seven thousand dollars deficit.
Thank you. Which we're going to cover with reserves. All right.
But that doesn't include the seven positions and the others.
Now, it includes Assistant City Manager and Accountant.
I'm sorry. I'm finished. Question on the motion.
So I will take, I'll go back and take everyone's vote. Councilmember Spencer Wong?
With only four hundred and seven thousand deficit? No.
Yes.
Councilmember Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
I struggled with this, and I know there's been a lot of negotiation and debate going on here with the city manager. I agree with Dr. Wong that this deficit actually reflects a higher amount that we have not been completely transparent about, in my opinion. And that is because we have basically balanced the budget by not filling positions as they have, as they have left or they've been vacant. And this has happened over several years, and so here we are. And again, through negotiation, we have agreed to basically force the hiring of some key positions that have been identified as probably some of the most important to start with. And that's what puts us at this deficit. But it is absolutely the truth that we are further behind than that. So for purposes of moving this to get to the next section, I approve this as a budget. However, I do believe that it is still not completely accurate as it doesn't include those other positions.
But I think that requires some explanation because that's not because anybody's trying to hide any costs or expenses, but there are some of those positions would impact subset budgets, but not necessarily the general fund. But the biggest part, the largest impact to address the deficit of four hundred, whatever thousand, would be handled by the general fund. And our general fund currently has roughly eighteen million. And so four hundred and seventeen thousand, we can handle it. But it also puts the pressure on us to do, sharpen our pencils and make sure we've got erasers to address future budgets. And we, that's part of what we've been talking about, is how we're going to go about that before we get to next year's budget, correct?
Yes, and that's part of the negotiation that happened, and that's why I'm going to vote for this. However, I'm putting out there publicly that I do believe services have been hurt because we've piled more and more work onto existing staff, and we've had issues that have happened in the last couple of years where we had an employee theft issue and some other things a couple of years ago. These are public knowledge because we didn't have enough oversight. And it's something I've been talking about for a while. I know we recently had an election where folks campaigned about being pro-public safety and all kinds of things like that, but those things cost money. Everything costs money. The fact that we have folks that come out in the middle of the night and fix our water system, that fill our potholes, that mow our parks that we all go to and we enjoy, those are very real things that we can't ignore. And the citizens have to know that if we don't get some type of extra revenue here, those services will be affected. And I, and again, I agree with you. I don't think that anybody was trying to hide anything or be nefarious. We certainly didn't pocket any of that money. It's not in any of our homes. The issue is that we've tried to be fiscally responsible more than plenty of other places by cutting back and tightening the belt. We're just at a point where we can't do that anymore. And it, and it, I'm going to have to stop because I'll end up getting really, really upset that there's a distinction between political ideology and the realities of where we live and the costs and the stuff we're talking about, inflation and all those things that are around us. And so it is a big deal. It is a big deal. And I know we're going to continue to talk about it tonight, but I do agree with Dr. Wong that we're still not talking about a lot of those positions, and we still have people wearing multiple hats. However, this is part of a process that we're working through to try to fix that. I know we're talking about a salary full across the board, every position in the city, a compensation survey in this next year to kind of see where we stand. There's a lot of things that we're proactively taking, but that's where we're at, so.
I appreciate your comments. I think the main point I wanted to make was we, our intention is to be as transparent as possible.
Hundred percent.
The more we get into the weeds on the budget, it gets complex.
Very much. Very much.
So motion, motion carried by a vote of four, four, four to one. Thank you.
Okay. We now have the Housing Authority budget that we can take next. This is... Remember, there's not much of a change here. This isn't as controversial as everything else.
Move it.
First and a second. Madam Clerk.
Motion is to adopt Loma Linda Housing Authority Bill R dash twenty twenty-four dash zero one, a resolution of the Loma Linda Housing Authority, establishing a final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Councilmember Spencer Wong?
Support.
Councilmember Papesku?
Yes.
Councilmember Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to two L, this is the presentation on the survey results that we requested.
I would like to introduce Dr. Richard Bernard. He is a partner at FM3 Research. His firm conducts research on behalf of government organizations and other clients on various issues, including voter budget priorities. His clients in the county include SBCTA and the cities of Chino, Chino Hills, Fontana, Montclair, Ontario, and Ucaipa, as well as the town of Apple Valley.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members, staff. Thank you for inviting me to present the results of your recent voter opinion survey. We conducted the survey between May twenty-seventh and June third. It was a dual-mode survey, which means a random portion of the respondents took the survey on the phone and a random portion took the survey online. In fact, fifty-one percent took it on the phone. We interviewed a random sample of Loma Linda registered voters who are likely to vote in a November twenty twenty-four election, based on their past voter history or if they've recently registered to vote. We interviewed three hundred and three respondents. The margin of error for questions asked of everyone is plus or minus five point seven. In some cases, because we didn't want the survey to be too onerous on your voters, we took a list of items and we asked a random half the sample and another list or another random half the sample, and there the margin of error is plus or minus eight. We contacted your voters by telephone, email, and text, and we, of course, offered the survey in English and Spanish. For this particular survey, six percent of the respondents opted to take the survey in Spanish. And if you notice something doesn't quite equal a hundred percent, I blame that entirely and rounding, and you will see that in the survey, so I'm preparing you for that. I wanted to start off by giving you a little bit of background and context before we move into the illustrative example of the measure that we tested. We asked, as we typically do in a survey like this, whether folks think that the things in the city of Loma Linda are generally headed in the right direction or if they're off on the wrong track, partly to get a sense of the mood of the electorate. And in your case, forty-four percent feel things are headed in the right direction in plurality, twenty-two wrong track, and thirty-four percent either say they don't know or often that means they're mixed. They're not sure if it's quite right direction or wrong track. So your numbers are okay. They're pretty good. You have a two-to-one ratio of right direction to wrong track. I have seen cities in the last several months that are underwater, but I have also seen a number of cities that are in the fifties and low sixties. It's a trying time for most people, and your voters are no exception to that. We also asked a conceptual question. Do they even think that the city needs additional funds to provide the level of city services that residents need and want? As you can see from the slide, sixty-six percent, two-thirds, think there's at least some need for additional funds. So they're aware to some degree of your fiscal situation now, as I've been watching it all night. But sort of a modest twenty-four percent perceive there's a great need, suggesting that there is room for additional education to, so they can understand the situation right now. I'm going to move now into a, what I'll call, a hypothetical ballot question. Ultimately, it's up to the council to deliberate, or if they choose to, if you choose to deliberate whether to place something on or a ballot. But of course, my charge was to test something, so I had to test something. We tested a one-cent sales tax. Your finance folks tell me that that would generate approximately seven point nine million dollars annually. I worked with your legal counsel to make sure that the question was a legally permissible question. It wouldn't do you very well if I tested something and then your legal counsel said, oh, I would never allow that, then the numbers are useless. And since it's a general fund measure, ultimately, the money will just go into the general fund, and it's at the discretion of the council as to how you would use the money on an annual basis. But we're allowed legally to test some illustrative examples and place them in the ballot question. And so I worked with your staff to get a better understanding of council priorities, as well as the kinds of needs and what you use the general fund for. And I included some illustrative examples in the question. We read the question to them if the folks were on the phone or they read it if they were online. And we asked them, after they heard or read the question, sorry, I thought it was in front of you. I apologize. This is the question. After we read or they heard the question, we said, if there were an election today, would you vote yes in favor or no to oppose? Trying to simulate an election at the moment of the survey. If they said they would vote yes in favor, we asked them, is that definitely or probably yes? Because we want to know the intensity of support, that is, the percent who say definitely yes. If they said no, we asked them, is that definitely or probably no? Because we want to know the intensity or the percent who say definitely no to this measure. If they were undecided, we pushed them a little. We said, well, would you lean yes or would you lean no? If they said they'd lean yes, we put them in the yes camp, no in the no camp. For this particular measure, five percent said they were undecided and needed to know more and couldn't tell us at the time whether they would support it or not. So on the initial vote, which is a general-purpose fifty-plus-one measure, this is assuming, of course, which I know you'll get into in a moment, if it were this election, because it's not your regularly scheduled election, you would have to legally declare a fiscal emergency, and it would have to be a five-nothing vote. Your legal counsel can support this or not, but I believe that's the case. Because typically, the only other time you can do a general-purpose measure at a fifty-plus-one is during a regularly scheduled election, which you just had in the primary in March. So for this scenario of a general-purpose fifty-plus-one measure, sixty-five percent said they would vote yes, thirty percent said no, and five percent were undecided. If I use that margin of error test, which is plus or minus five point seven, and let's say six for simple math, if I look at the total yes, assuming everything goes in the direction of the measure, which it doesn't always, on the high end, it would be seventy-one, and at the low end, it would be fifty-nine, above the fifty-plus-one threshold and beyond the margin of error for passage. That thirty-seven percent definitely yes is a pretty good place to be. Been doing this for twenty-two years, and I've seen a lot of measures in the high thirties on the initial vote that have been successful. Typically, I expect about a floor of twenty percent on the definitely no. You're approximately there, within the margin of error, slightly less if you give it a little bit of space, but nonetheless, it's not a bad place to be, again, for a fifty-plus-one measure. I wanted to show this one demographic slide, but with a sense of caution. So we took, everyone who said it definitely, probably, or lean yes, and we made them yes. Definitely, probably, lean no and made them no. And then the percent that you see of sample means the percent that the folks in that district will make up of a likely electorate, a likely November twenty twenty-four electorate. And as you could see, the yes side, that all of them are in the sixties, low to mid-six or high sixties, but I will caution you, because of the sample size, the margin of error is plus or minus eleven point three. So that's important to know. I don't want to minimize it, but at least you can see that there seems to be somewhat of a consistency across the city for a fifty-plus-one measure. So now I want to move into the budget priorities. You may recall, I suggested that for a general-purpose measure, we can provide illustrative examples of how the money can be used. And so we randomized, we gave them this randomized list, and there are thirty-four items on there. And we said, regardless of whether you support the measure or not, how important would it be to include this item or this provision in the ballot or as part of the ballot? The dark blue is extremely important. The mid-color blue is very important. I've taken those two, and I've aggregated on the right-hand side and ranked it as such. The dull blue is somewhat important. The orange are the folks who said that's not too important, and that sliver of gray on the extreme is a, are the folks who said they didn't know, which is pretty modest. Of the thirty-four items, one item is in the nineties, and the extreme are very important. Nine are in the eighties, and eight are in the seventies. And you'll see, it's over a number of pages. So a couple of things before I get back to the sales tax specifically. I don't often see these numbers as high as they are. So it tells me, it tells me a few things, but most importantly, it tells me that the councils... council's priorities are very much in sync with your community. Because I see a lot of communities where maybe I get a, you know, maybe 170, 60, and I'm thinking, gosh, like, these people, these council members are like tone-deaf to their community, because there's, they're not in sync. These are extremely high numbers. The priorities that you place in terms of mostly around public safety, which is disproportionately part of your expenditures, at least within the context of the general fund, suggests there is consistency. And the second thing is, even if you choose not to move forward tonight with any kind of measure, which of course is at your discretion, I think this is a really important document when you're thinking about budget deliberations. We don't often get an opportunity to get a generalizable survey about what your priorities are among your voters, and here is one. So I'm hoping you'll be able to at least take advantage of that. So among the top priorities, as you can see, are many of them surrounding public safety. They're sometimes framed, they sound similar, but we try to frame it in a variety of ways because the ballot question is limited to 75 words, so each word is precious. I've tested each single phrase, and if I can get away with less words that communicate as equal amount of things, then I can put more illustrative examples in that ballot question. So I'm trying to sort of help the city, if, again, I'm not trying to get ahead of you folks at all, but if you're interested in trying to have a representative illustrative example of lists that are high priorities for your voters, I'm trying to give you those tools so you, you know how to sync it up with your voters. But in addition to the public safety, you can see addressing homelessness, maintaining parks. And as we go down a little bit further, there's preserving and maintaining open space and natural areas. So why is that important? Because if it was just a general, if it was just dedicated to public safety, one would call you on a dedicated measure, and a dedicated measure is two-thirds, which is a much more daunting measure to pass. It would also tie your hands, and that you'd only allow, be allowed to use that money for public safety, and at certain times, either over this, the history or the future of this council or future councils, you may want to use some of the money for other things. And again, that's totally, entirely up to your discretion. The last thing I want to point out is, before I move forward, is as you go down the list, notice the maintaining city services is at 84%, extremely or very important. I'm going to go down two slides, maybe three slides, to improving city services, 60%. So it doesn't say that people aren't interested in you improving city services, but that differential of the 60 to the 84, that 24-point gap suggests to me they like what they have, they love the city, but they want to maintain what they have. And if you don't have to make cuts, that's great, but if you have to decrease services, then it clearly is an issue among your voters. I wanted to also move on. As you know, the city cannot, and nor can you, with city funds or resources, advocate for a measure. You can certainly express your opinion on the dais, and you can also do what you want in your own time. That's not using city funds at all. But ultimately, all the staff cannot advocate, but they're allowed to educate. And so we presented your voters randomly, again, a series of educational statements, and we said after each one, "Tell me if it would make you more inclined to vote yes on the measure." The dark blue is much more inclined, the bright blue is somewhat more inclined, and I've aggregated the total more inclined to vote yes on the right-hand side. Remember, keep remembering, it's a 50-plus-one measure, and with the margin of error, these are quite strong messages, some more than others. But in fact, these resonate with your community. So a couple of them, the words in the parentheses, by the way, are just themes, so, oh, sorry, I apologize. Thank you, thank you. All right, I'll give you time to consume this. The dark blue is much more inclined, the bright blue is somewhat more inclined, I've aggregated the total more inclined on the right-hand side to vote yes. The words in the parentheses are just the themes of the, of the statements, because you certainly don't want me to read every statement tonight, you've had a long night already. But I do want to highlight a couple of them, and one in particular, because the intensity is so great on the first page and subsequent pages, you will see strong intensities, that dark blue, the quality of life. Many of us choose to live in Loma Linda because of the scenic views, natural areas, small-town character, high quality of life, and because residents tend to live longer than in most other places. Passing this measure is an investment in maintaining city services and infrastructure, such as public safety, roads, parks, open space, so that our community continues to be a great place to live and raise a family. I don't live here, but it seems from your data that this really resonates with your community as one of the arguments. And as you could see, as I walked down, you'll see pretty strong arguments, but the intensities are greater with the respect to the statement about patrols and also keeping gangs out of your community and issues related to property crime. Again, the theme of public safety is really paramount within the context of your voters. So what happens when I simulate educational outrage? So this means, in order for there to be a movement, someone has to educate. I can do this in the survey, but then if it doesn't happen, the numbers are going to be basically where they are at the beginning. So after you tell folks a little bit about what the money could be used for, and also the story of your city and the importance of public safety and the like, we re-asked that ballot question that you saw earlier. The initial vote, as you saw with just ballot title and summary, was 65, 30. After telling them all that education, support moves up nine points to 74%. The definitely yes, I would have anticipated to move up into the 40s, and that, to me, is a little bit of a surprise, but it moved the soft voters into being open to be supportive of the measure. The other point, while we haven't said anything negative, the other point is that the opposition is quite modest. If I use that margin-of-error test again, of, I'll say, simple math, 6. On the high side, looking at the 74, it will be 80, and at the low side, it will be 68. Now, not everything will go in the direction of the measure, so even being more conservative, that's 68. If I add 6, it's 74, and if I go down 6, it's 62. But it is above, above the 50-plus-one threshold and above the margin of error. I wanted to also come back and test a half-cent, because I don't know, before I do the survey, where people are, and I wondered whether one cent seemed to be too much for your community. And so I wanted to be able to provide you with an alternative option, in case you folks as a council thought that was an option that you might be considering. So in that case, we just simply said, well, if it wasn't a one cent, if it was a half-cent, providing, the one cent, just to remind you, was 7.9, so half of 7.9. And then, you could see that support pretty much tops out about at the same place, at three-quarters, but look at that intensity. It jumps from 38 to 51, suggesting that there is some sensitivity to the, the level of the sales tax rate, but nonetheless, the data suggests to me that the one cent could be viable from the results. So in conclusion, a plurality perceived things in the city are headed in the right direction, it's about a 2:1 ratio. Your numbers are okay compared to some other cities. Nearly 2 and 3 perceive the city has a need for at least some additional funds, though only about a quarter say great need. So they're clearly, if you, if you folks perceive that there is a need, then there's a, there's a need for education. A one-cent sales tax is viable for further planning, with nearly two-thirds of voters initially supporting the measure after education, and close to three-quarters support with the measure after education. Nonetheless, I am mindful that I would have liked that definitely has to be a little stronger. The one-half-cent sales tax probably would give you a couple of more points. If I thought it were close, I would say that would be my recommendation, and I have been known to do that in a number of cities when I look at the data, but I still think that the one cent could be in play if you folks are interested and if you pursue education. Just to remind you, on the top priorities, helping to prevent property crimes, thefts, and burglaries, maintaining 911 response, keeping public areas safe and clean, which is often a polite word for addressing homelessness, providing continued access to drinking water in an emergency, maintaining city services, ensuring safe place for children to play, and addressing homelessness, homeless, is some of the top priorities of your community. And with that, thank you for your patience, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that I can.
Dr. Daley, you're the statistician.
Yeah, no, I don't have any questions. It's a very good report. I'm impressed with the quality of questions you asked, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we see the proposed ballot statement that you tested first?
Absolutely.
Way back at the beginning.
Yes, yep. I will also tell you that I have worked with your, not to get ahead of you, but so that the legal counsel is prepared. I have used the data from the survey to propose, what I would argue, a stronger question based on your voter responses. I should also tell you that the survey was done before the Business Roundtable was taken off the ballot, and the Business Roundtable required a phrase for general government use. It's no longer on the state ballot, so as long as it's clear in the ballot question that it's a general, for general services, that specific quoted four words are no longer required. Thank you for your patience. I'm here if you have questions, as we go on.
Thanks, sir.
Sure.
Is that 1% or 1 cent?
Both.
Okay, so how do we, do we need to accept this before moving on then to the discussion? Is that the way you want to do it?
It's just a presentation, so we move to...
We just move on to...
To Emma.
To Emma, okay. All right, so Mr. City Manager, want to talk about this?
No, it's Sonia. Again, please, keep open mind, okay? Please listen, and why we need this, so.
Good evening. Once again, I'm Sonia Favela, Finance Director for the City of Loma Linda. At the April 9th City Council meeting, council requested more information regarding the revenue-generating ideas that were presented at the workshop dated March 13, and for staff to research what is entailed in the process of a voter-approved revenue measure. April 23, a presentation was given to recap the revenue-generating options mentioned in the March 13 meeting, as well as to explain what a transactions and use tax measure is and what it entails. This presentation will summarize what was presented and hopefully help you make a decision that will empower citizens to exercise their voice if the measure is placed on the ballot. City Council has historically maintained and increased the health of the general fund reserve with the goal of maintaining adequate reserve levels to mitigate the future risks of revenue shortfalls and anticipated expenditures. City Council has been conservative over the years when faced with budget challenges. In each case, the city was able to approve operationally-balanced budgets by shortening workdays by half an hour, reducing workforce, suspending programs and services, deferring needed repairs and maintenance, and employees taking on multiple roles. The general fund is the operating fund for the majority of the city's services and activities. Listed here on the left side, you'll see the different general fund departments that include the fire, police through a sheriff contract, planning and building and safety, public works, senior centers, the senior center, and general government administration. To the right, you'll see the revenue that covers all of these department expenditures, and that includes sales, property, transient occupancy tax, and business license tax. The fees are franchise fees, licensing permits, fines, and forfeitures. The charges for services include law enforcement and fire services contracts, refuse and recycling charges, and EMS membership and response fees. There's intergovernmental revenue, which is vehicle license fee, and one-time revenues, which are overhead, use of money and property, transfers in, and refunds and reimbursements, and miscellaneous revenue. You've seen a version of this graph earlier in the budget presentation, however, this one does not include any of the positions. This is based on what is currently in the budget. And as previously mentioned, there's a shortfall of $477,000 that is being covered by general fund balanced reserves. A 10-year forecast with a 2% to 3% projected increase in revenues and a modest 3% increase in expenditures shows a deficit that could occur each year. This is assuming everything continues as is and no positions and funding is added. If nothing is done to generate more revenue for the general fund, the fund balanced reserve will almost fully be depleted by 2035. During the March 13 budget workshop where city council, city staff, the budget and planning committees, city employees, and members of the public attended, the following ideas were collected. This was also reviewed at the April 23 council meeting. Cost reductions have been done, especially in positions causing employees to take on multiple roles, working outside of their work scope. As you saw previously, this is a list of unfunded positions that need to be added, as we explained in the budget meeting earlier. The positions listed above are positions that were either eliminated at some point to operationally balance the budget or are now needed due to increasing workload. The positions for fiscal year '25, '26, '26, '27 are due to the increase in population with the new development within the city, and also due to the new fire station and community center that will be needed to be staffed. The costs are estimates, as a formal study is needed to accurately project the cost of each position. I would like to note that these add up to $2.4 million. This is a list of unfunded projects. The items listed under fiscal year '24, '25 were items that were removed from the budget in an attempt to get closer to a balanced budget. As mentioned in the budget presentation, a new fire station and new community center are estimated to be completed in fiscal year '26, '27, for which equipment and furniture will be needed. These numbers are also rough estimates, as with rising costs, the amounts will likely increase by then. Total amount of unfunded expenditures, which includes the salaries noted in the previous slide, equipment and furniture, and legal and professional services, equals $4,59,100. We have updated the chart previously shown to include the unfunded positions and projects totaling $4.1 million. If there is no new revenue to fund these, the deficit will accumulate at a rapid speed, and general fund reserves will be exhausted by fiscal year '28, '29. A sales tax measure will generate $7.9 million in revenue, and that can help fill in the gap. Out of all the potential revenue-generating ideas explored, the potential 401-cent transactions and use tax revenue measure is estimated to generate $7.9 million in revenue, sales tax revenue annually. The city would be able to maintain essential city services for residents and businesses, including police, 911 emergency medical response, preserving and maintaining parks, open space and natural areas, repairing streets and potholes, maintaining clean and safe public areas, while addressing homelessness and maintaining senior programs. The city would maintain full control of the funds, and they would be directly tracked in the general fund. The city would be taking a proactive approach by placing it on the ballot this November 5th, rather than waiting until... 5th, rather than waiting until the General Fund shortfall continues to deplete the General Fund Reserves. The City of Loma Linda Essential Services Measure is being proposed to secure the city's long-term financial stability, to maintain public safety and essential city services for our residents and businesses. It will change the current sales tax rate by 1%, which is equal to 1 cent on every dollar spent on taxable goods used within the city. Based on the estimate prepared by the city's sales tax consultant, it could generate an estimated 7.9 million each year that locally, that will be locally controlled funds and that Sacramento or the county cannot take. Locally controlled funds means that the city will receive the full percentage proposed for the voter approved measure. Current Loma Linda sales tax is 7.75%. This chart totals 8.75% because it's intended to show you how the city's rate will be affected if a 1% or 1 cent transactions and use tax is adopted by the city of Loma Linda voters. Currently, the state takes 6% of the revenue. The county takes 0.75%, of which 25% is for transportation. The city only keeps 1% of the Bradley Burns Act. With the new transactions and use tax, the state and county would continue to receive the same amount. No portion of the new tax will be distributed to them, whereby Loma Linda has total control. Currently, the total 77.6 million in sales tax generated in the city, the state county keeps, the state and county keep 67.6 million, and Loma Linda receives around 10 million of the total 77.6 million. If the voters were allowed to the option to vote for this measure and it's successful, which Dr. Bernard has mentioned, the vast majority of the voters would vote in favor of this simple majority measure, and the city would potentially receive 17.9 million in sales tax revenue annually, and the state and county would continue to only receive 67.6 million. The purpose of this revenue measure is to maintain essential services for residents and businesses such as the ones listed here. Listed here are public safety, streets and sidewalks, park and community protection, fire protection, and programs and services. As previously mentioned, a district tax is imposed under the transactions and use tax law and can be found in Revenue Tax Code 7251. It must be approved by the voters. It is imposed on tangible goods, and the taxes allocated with the goods are delivered and placed into use regardless of the point of sale. This means that the point of sale businesses that reside in Loma Linda do not have to collect a TUT on goods that are shipped or used outside of the city. As previously mentioned, a 1% sales tax is equivalent to 1 cent per every dollar spent. Although the taxes apply to goods, not all of them are taxable. Sales tax is not applied to groceries, prescriptions, medical and dental services, real estate or rent transactions, education, electronically delivered goods such as music, books, movies, or software, and it doesn't apply to utilities or personal services or labor. This slide shows the tax rates for surrounding cities. The rates were obtained from the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. As you can see, Ontario, Colton, Redlands, San Bernardino, Riverside, Montclair, and recently Chino have all adopted a district tax. I would like to note that at the last presentation, Chino's vote, Chino voters had approved a 1% DUT during the March 5th election with a 60.1 voter approval, 61, 60.1% voter approval. We have been made aware that some of the cities on the right side of this list have been considering also placing a measure on the ballot. Last week, the city received the following notification to let government entities know which tax rates have changed, have changed effective July 1st, 2024. I wanted to include, include it here as it shows what the notices look like, and also to point out that Chino is listed showing the 1% increase in this, in their sales tax To summarize what was presented at the April 23 meeting, there are two types of measures, general purpose and specific tax. The differences are shown in this side, slide. The specific purpose is restricted to how it can be used. Staff is recommending a general purpose tax that will still include accountability by requiring funds to be audited during the city's annual external audit, and accountability by being included in the detail of how it's spent during the budget process and in the preparation of the city's annual financial statements. This information will also be available to residents online 24 hours per day, 7 days per week. The process is similar for both as they both require majority vote from council to place in the ballot. A general election is one where city council is up for election or reelection. The city's general election was March 5th. If council decides to put a measure on the ballot and let voters decide and vote on the measure this November 5th, it will be considered a special election and no council will be up for, as no council will be up for real, for election or reelection. A general tax also requires a separate vote to declare a fiscal emergency, so it can be consolidated in a special election. The fiscal emergency requires a unanimous vote from council. In order for the general purpose tax to be passed by voters, it requires a simple majority vote, whereas the special purpose tax requires a super majority, two-thirds voter approval. The next steps to place the TUT on a ballot are listed on this slide. Adoption of a resolution declaring a fiscal emergency due to the projected severe deficits in the future city budgets. Adopting a resolution to call and give notice of a special municipal election. Request Board of Supervisors of County San Bernardino to consolidate special election with the general election. Provide and set rules for filing of arguments for or against the measure and rebuttal arguments. Direct city attorney to prepare the impartial analysis of the ballot measure. Provide for other election matters as required by law. Conduct first a reading of the ordinance to be submitted to CDTFA relating to the proposed tax measure if approver, if approved by voters. And we would also like to note that in order to get this measure on the ballot, it needs to be submitted to San Bernardino County Elections Office by August 9th. This slide shows the timeline of what must take place. Today, you'll see that we are hoping that a fiscal emergency is declared and that action is taken to consolidate and put the measure on the ballot. There will be a second meeting in July that is needed in order to do the second reading of the ordinance. And as mentioned earlier, the last day to consolidate the election with the county is August 9th. The following are recommendations by city staff. First recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 2024-26, declaring a fiscal emergency due to the projected severe deficits in future city budgets. Recommendation number two is adopt Resolution Number 2024-27 to approve the following. Call and give notice of a special municipal election for the purpose of submitting to the city's qualified voters the City of Loma Linda Essential Services Measure, which enacts the City of Loma Linda Transactions and Use Tax Ordinance that establishes a general purpose 1% retail transactions and use tax measure subject to majority voter approval. Request the Board of Supervisors in the County of San Bernardino to consolidate the special municipal election with the statewide general election to be held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. Provide and set the rules for the filing of arguments for and against the measure and rebuttal arguments. Direct the city attorney to prepare the impartial analysis of the ballot, the ballot measure, and provide for the election matters as required by law. Recommendation number three is to conduct first reading of ordinance to be submitted to city's voters entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, Adding Chapter 3.34 to Title III of the Loma Linda Municipal Code Related to Imposing a General Transactions and Use Tax to Be Administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration," reading by title only and waiving further reading. Authorize the mayor on behalf of the city council to prepare and file a written argument in favor of the proposed measure. Authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents on behalf of the city, and approve an appropriation of 220,000 from General Fund Reserves to fund the sales tax measure special election, voter information activities, and the assessment to administer the new local sales tax. I am available for any questions.
My question is, is there any kind of a state definition of fiscal emergency?
Yes, there is. It's in 13, Article 13C. I don't have that. Do you have that specific language, Sonia?
I do not.
A lot of it is at the, at the discretion of the city council. It's, it's not a high threshold, and to the best of my knowledge, cities that have declared a fiscal emergency, I'm unaware of any of those determinations being overturned, if they were ever challenged.
I was just doing a simple Google search. I see that the state has declared a fiscal emergency in terms of their budget this year.
I think by any definition, the state has an emergency fiscal situation.
What, what are you thinking? Let me say something. We, we really need this, this sale tax increase. We might be okay next year or next two years, but in the future, we might be in trouble. And, and I, I'm with, I think the mayor mentioned at the budget workshop, hey, if 1%, you think 1% is too much, how about half percent? Anything is, is better than nothing. So that's, that's my comment.
So I, we actually don't think you needed 1%, but if you do need, need a 1%, then there should be some additional considerations made, such as the unfunded liabilities with CalPERS and some other things. This 1% would actually allow you to pay that down, and my concern would be that, that you all, all of a sudden think that you have all these extra funds, and when reality, there's CalPERS and there's other liabilities and increased costs. The city shouldn't, and I guess some of that should be communicated to the public because there truly is a liability for CalPERS, and if you have these funds coming in, before your expenses catch up with the funding, we would recommend that you start to pay down CalPERS and fund some of the unfunded, I mean, truly, if you, your budget is 1.7 million underwater right now, if you filled all those positions, and it will quickly grow, grow to 2 million. And so we really do are supportive of increasing it, but then we would encourage you to pay down your unfunded liabilities and things like that, why you have the money, because your expenses and revenue are still going to narrow in the future.
Yes, sir.
I, I know for the last several years, we've been paying down our CalPERS unfilled liability. What, what's the status of that currently?
We, at one, at one time.
We were paid off.
But now it went up to 4 million now?
I believe it was close to 8 million in the last financial statements.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking that it was close to seven, seven or eight million.
So what happens is they play the stock market, and when that goes up or down, that, that tells us how much we owe.
Because we, we had it paid.
We had it paid off.
I thought we had it. Okay. Well, I knew it was significant. I will say, you know, talking with our counterparts in other cities, your observations earlier were accurate. I mean, there are other cities that are in deep weeds just with the CalPERS unfunded liability that they're carrying. So that, I mean, that's the silver lining in this, but your point's well taken.
I, I believe it, and I, you didn't, I didn't see it up there. I believe it's public record. I mean, I certainly have talked to several of their council members about it, but Ucaipa is facing a $7 million deficit? And, and they are, have already moved to place this on the ballot, and it's, it's, it's kind of noteworthy if you look at kind of the political makeup of Ucaipa, that's a very strongly conservative community, a very strong conservative council. And, and I, I guess I'll just kind of address the elephant kind of in the room. If, I'm a fiscal conservative, and I believe in less government, how do I stomach asking voters for a tax increase?
Well, for me, it's more than I could stomach unless you are going to pay down these unfunded liabilities and, and fund, you know, your vehicle, future purchases, and some other things like that. Then it makes it a little bit more palatable for me, but, you know, I also realize that doing a half percent or a half cent is what I would prefer, but I also know that five years from now, you're probably going to need the one, the whole 1%. Do you come back five years from now and ask for another half percent? I don't know. That's not my call.
And I think from the presentation that we got from Dr. Bernard showed that there was support for both, for half and even for the 1%. So he had even said, you know, are you leaving money on the table if you don't go for that that you might need later? So it kind of plays into that, but I, I'm kind of to let, let the voters decide, you know?
You guys, you guys are going to have to decide either the half percent or 1%. I don't think you could put the option out there.
I mean, let the voters decide the, let the voters decide if they want a tax.
I would like to add on the tail of Mr. Nelson's comments, that voters may adopt a transactions and use tax in increments of 0.125%, up to a cap of 2%. And if the city doesn't elect to move forward, other taxing agencies can also adopt such a measure, such as the county, and that would reduce the amount of sales tax that we can potentially go for in the future.
One other.
So the cap is 2% total?
Correct.
And if the county raises their tax rate, they eat into that?
It reduces the amount that we could potentially go for in the future.
Yeah. I also know that the, the university will oppose it.
That's actually not true. I actually met with Dr. Hart a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
And that is absolutely not true. So I don't want to get into the specifics of our conversation, but I, I will say this, it was conveyed to me, and Shonda's not here, but it was officially conveyed to me, the university is supportive of whatever we have to do to survive as a city, and there are some things that we've actually already even looked at in relation to how we manage that and that relationship and that transaction. And talking to other, well, I don't want to get into it publicly, but that's, that's something that's been already dialogued about a little bit, so.
As long as it's been dialogue.
Don't, don't put that out there, because that's not, that's 100% not correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm not, I'm also not putting their support on it either. I'm just saying that it was very clearly conveyed that the university is, we are, we are great partners at this point, and we're all looking for ways to, to make the world go round, and, and so there's some other things that are being talked. And so there are some other things that are being talked about behind the scenes in relation to that, but I think it's workable.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, I have an answer to Councilmember Rigsby's question. And this is, we use the exact wording in our resolution. So Article thirteen C two B of the state constitution states in talking about these elections, "The election required by this subdivision shall be consolidated with a regularly scheduled general election for members of the governing body of the local government, except in cases of emergency declared by a unanimous vote of the governing body." So that's as specific as the constitution gets. So it's, the courts are going to defer to the discretion of the city council in determining whether there's an emergency or not.
So is it declaring a fiscal emergency or declaring it an emergency?
An emergency.
Onto the ballot?
But we've all interpreted that to be a fiscal emergency.
So I struggle as a fiscal conservative, living in one of the highest tax states in the union, and we all know that the cost of everything has gone up, that living life is hard. I can promise you, although I know we all equally have challenges, my wife and I were not expecting to have a two-year-old as I get close to retirement. And so, you know, laying it all out there, we have a 16-year-old who, you know, we were thinking that's, that's the way it's going to be, and we had tried for years to have another kid, that didn't happen. And then, oops, which is phenomenal, and she's a beautiful, wonderful addition to our family, but that has meant my wife can no longer work as much. So she's down to working half or less the amount of time that she was before. We're facing some really expensive childcare stuff that I'm sure a lot of you out there are familiar with. And so my financial situation went from, we were doing okay, to it's completely different. And so I don't, I don't take any of this lightly in talking about adding any more to the mix. But I guess I also have to be a realist of understanding where we live and the state we live in, and how the state will continue to keep doing this to us regardless of what we want, and how we continue to be the city that we love to be. And I am very afraid of what's going to happen in the future. And I personally believe if you have a personal moral objection to this, and you want to vote no at the ballot box, I encourage that. If you want to run a campaign against it, I encourage that, as long as you don't use city funds, right? That's 100% okay, but I, my concern is that I hope we, as a council, don't block the ability for this community to decide on their own. And I know some things have been talked about and spread around and whatnot. Again, I would hope we are able to allow our voters to take a look at this. And again, if you personally are against it, I welcome you to stand out in front of State of Brothers and tell people not to vote for it. But I really hope this is something we give our citizens an opportunity to vote on. We've had a few council meetings since the last election, and I think it's been pretty clear, I mean, they were, the messaging was there before that, but I'm just saying, for this particular council, the message has been pretty clear. There's people that have come in and complained about the crime and the homelessness and other issues in the city. And I just fear we are not in a position to answer that as it gets worse. And, I don't know. So I'm in favor of allowing the voters to make a choice on this, but you guys have known that for a while. I think we need to flush this out. I think we need to talk about it. I know there's some people that have said they're not going to talk, they're going to stay silent, but I think we need to all talk about this.
Well, my understanding of Robert's Rules of Orders is the way you force a conversation is to put a motion on the floor. And I could say a number of things, but I think enough has been said from my perspective. So to get this on the floor, so that we can get the discussion where it needs to be to vote, I will move to approve Council Bill R-2024-26. I think everybody on the council is a fiscal conservative, and we understand, and trust me, I have a lot of neighbors that have talked with me because some of them were part of the survey. So it's been interesting. But from my perspective, not everybody's for it, but from my perspective, they have a very mature perspective and judgment about it, so I support the comments you've made. I think people, the citizens of, have a right to provide input. We have a good survey, it's a meaningful, random sample. But nothing compares with putting it to the full population we're trying to get a handle on. So that's a motion. It does need a second before we can discuss it, though.
I'll second.
All right. Rhonda, do you have any thoughts?
My thoughts is, you know, based on the survey, what we've heard from the research, what we've heard from the budget, what we've heard from the budget committee, I fully support and believe that we're doing the right thing, taking the right steps, and being responsible to let the community have a voice in this, and to let the community vote. And they could very well vote no, and that could happen, and that's okay. But at least we give them the chance to weigh in on this. So I really support giving them that opportunity.
Dr. Rigsby? No comment. Okay. Mr. Popescu?
I stated back in April that I was confident that Paul would come back showing support of the measure. That's no surprise. I have looked at the budget. I was pleasantly surprised to see how well it was managed the last four years. I think I'm not happy about the fact that we're having to approve a deficit. I do see the concerns about the future. There's shortfalls. It doesn't really specify what's causing those shortfalls. I didn't see any specifics on, you know, if we raise taxes, where that money's going to actually go. There's a list of things that it can go for, but I didn't see any specifics on. Is it to add people, increase salaries, add officers? It's a number of things. As far as fiscal emergency, you know, the attorney said it's really up to the council to decide what constitutes that. I don't see that at that stage. I understand there's concern about the future, but there's nothing that raises the level of fiscal emergency. In my view, I would have to, you know, have eliminated a lot of position, cut salaries, got to the point where we, they're just, we cannot function anymore. And I'm pretty confident, I understand where the voters sit on this. I think it's in their best interest to make sure that we do not raise their taxes. I think declaring this is a step towards doing that. I know you want to separate them, but I don't see it that way. And, you know, I talked to voters, and none of them said, you know, I don't like what you guys are doing at the city. I would love to pay more money so you guys can provide better services. I did not hear that at all. In fact, I talked to them and I said, we manage the budget, we increase revenue without raising taxes, and I promise that's what I'm going to do. I truly believe the budget committee and the staff had a long workshop that talked about various options. It seems that we eliminated all the options, and we narrowed it only on increasing taxes to the residents. I'm not sure I agree with your statement regarding the university. It's been made very clear, it's costing them $2 million, 2.1 to be exact, over 10 years that's $20 million. They're our biggest employer, they provide healthcare, they provide us education. I've talked to other businesses, they are very concerned about the fact that a sales tax increase will impact their businesses. I've talked to professionals who've stated, people sometimes come to the city because we have less taxes. They will not spend their money in our city, so we're going to hurt their ability to generate more revenue. I'm concerned about the fact that when we try to educate the voters, we say it's a one percent, but it doesn't really identify what's the impact on the residents of that one percent. Eight million divided by 25,000 people, we're looking at $320 a person. That's, you know, $1,300 a year for a family of four. Not everybody's going to spend that amount, but that's how you divide up. There's some, some businesses are going to be very, very hurt by that. Gas tax is going to be going up. I think families will be impacted. So me declaring a fiscal emergency so the voters can pass a tax increase is not the way I would manage this city or this budget, so I would not be in favor of it.
Okay. I appreciate you explaining that. You still are going to say nothing?
Looking at the trajectory of the revenue for the city and the expenditures for the city, I do not see a fiscal emergency.
Okay.
Let me just make a comment. I think there's, city council's got to get our act together then, because we have, over the past few years, has been pointed out, we found ways to balance our budget and protect our general fund so that we have emergency money. We've also now identified that there are multiple positions, and we frankly, as a council, have put pressure on city staff, particularly the city manager, to fill positions that we need to fill, like assistant city manager, and you've seen the others that have already been on the screen. And so if this isn't the way to do it, I can accept that. But we got to get, we've got to get our act together to facilitate enabling the city manager and his staff to be able to, on the one hand, meet what we have put significant pressure on him, and he's responding, but we're not providing additional revenue. And now we just approved a budget for the first time since I've been on the council that has a deficit balance on it. So I think we need to start meeting regularly and come up with the more realistic and appropriate options.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Do we need to do an official vote, or do we kind of understand where we're at?
No, I think there's a motion, first and second.
All right.
I think we're not even the only city declaring Chino, right? Chino just declared a fiscal emergency, so I'm looking at my phone. Chino will vote, and didn't they declare it for them? Yeah, Chino. So other cities around us are going this route to protect, you know, what's coming, and actually for us, what's already here. Because like Councilman Daley was saying, we are cutting positions to try to make and balance the budget, and this is what we've been doing. And now we're to the point of reckoning, right? When you're down six, Jarb's doing six jobs, I think, right? Six jobs, Jarb, six, seven, you know? And we see Sonya, I think Sonya put together and showed just of those jobs, not the ones Jarb's doing, because Jarb's doing all these jobs, but many of the jobs, 1.7 million already, right? We have to come to realize that we have to do something about it now. We can't just say, you know, no, let's find other ways. We really need this so that the city can function, guys. So it's, for us to declare fiscal emergency, we're not saying we give the tax that goes to the voters, they vote and say, but at least we give them a chance. So that's what I'm asking you guys, is that we come together and just say we value the employees, we value everybody here, and let's figure out, right? Let's come together and put it to the voters. Versus, you know, if we don't, how have we bettered our position here? How have we bettered the city? I don't think we have.
So one of our watchers just told me that Rancho Cucamonga is putting it on the ballot this November, which is pretty incredible. If that's the case, that's pretty incredible, because that's been a very well-run city for a long time. All right. So we have a question. Madam Clerk, would you please call?
Motion is to adopt Council Bill R-2024-26, a resolution of the city council of the city of Loma Linda, California, declaring a fiscal emergency pursuant to Article thirteen C, Section two B of the California Constitution. I will take your vote, and this must be adopted by unanimous decision. Councilmember Spencer Wong?
Support.
Councilmember Popescu?
No.
Councilmember Rigsby?
No.
Mayor Pretend Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion to pass failed by a final vote of four, or three to two. And since this resolution did not pass, it's unnecessary to vote on the associated resolution and ordinance of this item.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar.
I move it.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull item three, since we not, we not approved the resolution, we don't need to hire a consultant.
Okay. Any other items we want to look at or address?
I'll second, I'll just make a general comment again. On item three Q, do appreciate some annual bend of mission idioms for giving us $300,000 in grants. It's a perfect example of how we can actually generate revenue to help pay for some of our expenses, and I know they've given money to other cities in much larger amounts, but they really have stepped up and helped us, and it actually helps our fire department. So I'm really appreciative of their efforts and look forward for continual support from them.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. We had a first by Dr. Daley, and I think a second by Mr. Popescu.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar with the exception of Agenda Item three F, which is the contract to communications and media management consultants. I will take your vote. Councilmember Spencer Wong?
Support.
Councilmember Popescu?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to old business, four A, this is the second part of our ordinance to repeal the drive-through fast-food-based formula restaurant. Proclusion.
Just take my comment.
Take it all out of your mouth.
So the staff recommended the city waive the reading for the Council Bill zero dash 2024 dash zero four, and direct the clerk to read by the title only and adopt the ordinance.
And I will continue to tell you that I've had several business owners and property owners that are closely watching, they're watching right now, that have been texting me over the last month or so, that are anxious and say there's still quite a bit of interest from some of those, those higher-end businesses, that hopefully this will maybe add some revenue in some small part. So.
This is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing, continued from last month. So is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Mayor Emeritus.
Milford Harrison, and a citizen of Loma Linda. I wish I could have talked on the last issue. You'd never opened it up for public comment. Because I do have some significant comments on that. On this, I'm much in favor of it. We really need to do drastic things to. We really need to do drastic things to make sure that this city doesn't end up like Stockton or San Bernardino or whatever. It just, every, every city around us, Grand Terrace is going to put it on the ballot. Anyway, we, and we, we spend a lot of our dollars in surrounding cities, surrounding cities, not just Loma Linda, and they're all charging 8.75. I'm very much in favor of this because I think this will help a little bit in the deficit and maintain the wonderful city that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. We're going to close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion.
Do you have any comment?
Yes.
We just had, yeah. You want to come up?
They want to go.
That's why they came. I think they came to talk about the repeal.
Okay. Come on up.
These are the original proponents of this bill.
Yeah. So my name is Wayne Deisinger and I'm a resident of Loma Linda. Was actually born here and have had a house here for the last 20-some years. Thank you for letting me comment on this and also for letting me listen to the previous discussion. It was, was enlightening. So as, as you know, 12 years ago, SB 1000 was developed because the Loma Linda community stated clearly that our Blue Zones identity was important. There was clear data, the, the retail food environment index, which looks at quality of food, shows that if you have a, a low retail food environment index, you have worse health outcomes. So there's more childhood obesity and that data has, has, has been there for, you know, it was there 12 years ago. It's even stronger now. And we also know that when a new drive-through fast food restaurant was proposed, the eyes of the world were on us. And those of you who remember 12 years ago know what kind of public reaction this, this developed. So I'm not sure why SB 1000 is up for repeal right now. Obviously I just heard a whole budget thing. And I don't know what you think you can gain by, how much money you, you think you can gain by repealing it. But what I do know is that four of the five city council members, and thank you for your service. That's a, that's a long amount of service. Four of the five of you were here when we created that bill then. And I don't know why all of a sudden now it doesn't work when back then it was so important for it to work. But I also know that our Blue Zones identity remains incredibly strong. That's something that's important to the citizens of Loma Linda. I know that that retail food environment index, the data behind that showing that it's important as far as the health of, of citizens in the community is only stronger. And I know that the world is still watching us. So I would make the case that now SB 1000 is even more important than it was in 2012. And I'm going to say two things along those lines. First, you probably are aware that this, the county of Riverside, with the support of IEHP Foundation and multiple other entities, is investing $40 million to become a Blue Zones county. That's $40 million that the city of Loma Linda has not had to spend a cent on because we were sort of inherited with this Blue Zones title. So Loma Linda has competition right next door to us as far as what is a Blue Zones community. I also know that there's increased interest in utilizing the Blue Zones brand in commercial ways. So the recent Netflix documentary on Live to 1,000 is just an example of how that's played out. So not only am I a member of the community, I'm also a primary care physician and I'm chief medical officer of a health transformation company that has contracts with over 200 physicians, primary care physicians, and over 2,000 specialty physicians in the five largest counties of Southern California. So LA, Orange County, Riverside, San Bernardino, and San Diego counties. As of April 2024, my organization has a contract with Blue Zones to rebrand ourselves as Blue Zones Health. We are pushing into the physical opportunities of the Blue Zones brand and we would love to invest in a Blue Zones Health Center in Loma Linda. We plan to open as many as seven centers in Riverside County in association with the Blue Zones initiative there. When our CEO, who is an economist based out of New York City, learned that the city of Loma Linda may be stepping away from the Blue Zones health approaches by reversing Senate, or the, the bill 1000, SB 1000, and lowering the RFEI in our community, not only were there significant disappointment, there was also serious questions as to whether we should invest in a city that is stepping away from a Blue Zones brand in a, in this sense of being a bastion of health. As a city, we have a unique opportunity to push into one of our core identities, which is we're an original Blue Zones, and the commercial opportunities that exist there. Or we can step away from that, lose our Blue Zones identity and see the health of our populations decrease. I encourage you to stay strong, maintain SB 1000 and keep Loma Linda an exemplary Blue Zones community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You willing to take a question?
Sure.
Okay. From my perspective, and, and sometimes I oversimplify things. We are approaching, we're a divided council right now. Everybody believes in Blue Zone. We're proud of the identity that we've been able to be a part of. And this is not a binary choice, obviously, but we are clearly at a point where we've cut many positions. We're in the process of union negotiations with various employees. Everybody is experiencing inflation, wants more money. And without doing that, you know, without knowing how that's all going to turn out, we just approved a deficit budget. So I think one of the simple explanations to your query, which is appropriate and honorable, is we need, and I'm not saying it's a binary choice, but we need revenue or we have to cut city services. And I'm probably oversimplifying, but not that much. Would you be supportive of, of a 1% sales tax to provide the revenue that we need to continue to function at the level we're functioning?
Yeah. So thank, thank you for, thank you for asking me.
I'm putting you on the dais right now.
I appreciate that. I, I am also a fiscal conservative. I, I moved here from the state of New Hampshire. I lived there for eight years. I, I love their idea of being fiscally conservative, socially liberal. So, so I'm not a fan of big government and I hate the idea of raising taxes. But, you know, I, so if, if I had been voting, I probably would have voted for the half percent sales tax increase. That's probably what I would have, would have come out on. I do feel like if, you know, I mean, Mr. Popescu talked about talking to the citizens. So I, I feel like if you talk to the citizens, you're not going to find any of them, or I shouldn't say any of them. I'm sure there'll be some, but there would be a very large majority who would say, we want to maintain our Blue Zones identity. And I do feel like SB 1000 sort of getting rid of that, you're, you're very much putting at risk the idea that we're a Blue Zones community. So, so I, I think it's, if, if you, if you actually go to the voters, it's pretty clear they would have supported a tax increase. I'm pretty sure they would not support the idea of bringing in more fast food restaurants to bring in more money. I mean, they would, they would easily support a tax increase over the idea of more fast food restaurants. I can almost guarantee that 1,000%. And, and ask, ask your voters. I mean, ask them.
Well, we've been talking, well, I haven't asked them questions about Blue Zone identity, but that's a fair point. I have been talking with a lot of people about this tax potential of putting a tax increase on the ballot for citizens to decide. And you saw the, I would say, based on conversations I've had with my district, I think this was, the data in the survey was a fair representation. But we, we haven't done any similar survey regarding Blue Zone identity and I haven't talked with anybody about it.
And, and what I'm trying to say too, and again, I am the chief medical officer of a company that will invest in Loma Linda or not invest in Loma Linda based on some decisions that are being made tonight.
Dr. Weisinger, I wish you'd been here at the last meeting because unfortunately, things changed significantly with the pandemic. So a lot of businesses now have adopted a drive-through business model that they may or may not even employ, but the fact is they are worried that if something like that were to come through again, they want to have options. That's been expressed to me, hold on, I'm talking. That's been expressed to me probably 25 times from property owners and business owners in talking with our Chamber of Commerce folks and talking with, talking with our businesses. We had a, we had a, this is not directly related to drive-through, but we had a, an Indian restaurant that opened here and he wasn't paying attention. And it wasn't until after he opened that he realized we have certain restrictions on alcohol. And that affects how he sells his food and, and his, his national identity and his brand. And it's, it's not that we're trying to backtrack or change any of that. In fact, we, we're super excited to talk about some options or opportunities to move forward with the Blue Zones stuff. However, we also live in a world where there's realities and that if we can't pay for the services and things that we have going on here, I believe that our, our repeal ordinance is written in a way that it still puts quite a bit on our, our planning process and our planning commission. It's even written in a way that, that there's scrutiny that's put on. So we're not saying we're going to put in, I don't even want to make a, put a name out there because I don't want hate mail. That's not the point of it. There are, there are specific companies that are interested and these are, and again, I want to put their names out, but these are, you would probably consider them vegetarian, higher-end restaurants that are looking for these types of opportunities.
So, so remember.
For me, it is a binary choice. I voted for it last time. It was actually unanimous council.
Yeah. I think, I think four of the five people, all four of you.
100%.
Going for it, yeah.
Times are, times are different now.
Yeah. But, but remember SB 1000 does not ban drive-through restaurants. It does not ban fast, it does not ban junk food or, or whatever restaurants. I mean, Mochi, Mochi Donut Hut or whatever came in, they're terrible food. So it doesn't ban those kinds of things. What it bans is fast food drive-through restaurants, which is where the RFEI really makes a difference. It's, it's not against drive-through restaurants. It's just against junk food, drive-through restaurants.
Yeah.
But there are even vegan, there's now even vegan fast food that's becoming, but I wanted to introduce myself.
Vegan fast food would theoretically be appro, well, it depends, it depends on whether it's junk food or not.
This is where, what we're going. I don't think we've met, I'm one of the professors over in the School of Public Health. And so for the past 10 years, I've been studying the centenarians in this region and beyond. In fact, I even published a book after publishing journal articles, what does the Blue Zone really look like from generation to generation, right? So I started with the centenarians on down to the young children in our community. And my book is published by Tyndale Publishing House called Raising Resilient Kids. And it's about the habits of the centenarians. I think our community is kind of getting away from that long, long ago, right? The younger generation, we don't have it. So one of my goals is to really bring it back because I think we're missing the forest for the trees. We are so focused on a drive-throughs and we've got three smoke shops, three smoke shops in the small city of Loma Linda. So one of my goals is that we really embrace our own motto is a city of wellness and prosperity. In fact, I just entertained people from Argentina and Mexico that came here to want to see what a Blue Zone is. They called up and said, we were coming, we want a tourist destination. And they heard that we're not a tourist destination. And I thought, my word, why are we not? People come from around the world. So one of my goals is that, and it's coming up next, is developing a revenue generating committee, is really thinking, how do we embrace that, right? Even developing our own brand around this. We can't use Blue Zone because Dan Buettner and Adventist Health will chase us with their lawyers. They will get us. But we can come with something else. We've published on this and it's there for us. We need it. So we take this probably $40,000 and develop the brand, develop the logo, and then we start picking out what kind of businesses do we want here? Vegan fast food is a thing. I don't want to say the names because some of the fast food places are probably, you know, Ellen G. White would be rolling over in her grave if she heard us pronounce some of the names of these places. But there are some wonderful vegan vegetarian options that are available that would need a drive-through. However, my concern is why don't we figure out, develop our brand, develop our community around this identity and then really start selling it? You see in our budget, we're going to need it now more than ever. So that's our next step is how do we really embrace this? How do we go for it? I'm not so worried of the drive-through because, you know, I'm here to help us see, we don't want things like Redlands. We don't want things like Colton. We want to be our own where people are saying, yeah, we're going to come from Argentina because you guys got that. Oh, you have a Glenn Ivy Spa or something, you know? Something around what makes you a wellness tourist destination. So you have my commitment, even if we repeal this, whatever this ban of, you know, whatever, that we really begin to embrace, what does it mean to be this kind of Blue Zone?
And, and if the city council votes to repeal that, the voters will think of this city council as the city council that, that stepped away from the Blue Zones. And, and you can, you can make a case, but the, the, you know, you're a scientist. You work at the School of Public Health. The data is clear that this retail food environment index makes a difference as far as the health of the community. Why would we step away from that when we have all of these opportunities to step into the kind of things that you're talking about? I mean, think of it from a science perspective as a, as a professor and we have other scientists here. Why would we step away from that?
But I think thinking of driving through a fast food, I mean, we're limiting ourselves thinking back in the days, fast food was only McDonald's. And I get that when we put that.
And again, this SB 1000 does not ban drive-through healthy food restaurants. It allows that.
It allows me to have my vegan, it would allow me to have my vegan.
Absolutely, absolutely. We did not, we did not try to ban drive-through healthy restaurants. We just tried to ban drive-through junk food restaurants.
Correct.
The restriction blocked large, multi, you know, large fast food companies. And I think there was a number on it, like if they have 500 restaurants or there's some kind of a threshold. So it's, it definitely was not targeted at small companies.
All right. Anyway, thank you very much.
Should we find this out before we proceed?
No.
Well, I would, I just want to, I know we're in a hurry now since it's going not the way we want to. But I want, I want to commend you for coming because I think you're 10 times more eloquent than I was. I made some of the same points you just made tonight. I, I agree with you in one area and I disagree on the other. I really don't think the voters would actually approve a tax increase. I know you think so. But I also believe 100% with you that voters would not be happy with the idea that we're changing the identity of the city. I know these voters, I know Loma Linda. It is a healthy, conscious community and they're very sensitive. There's a reason why you and your group stood up and you got a lot of attention and we all agreed with you. And for 12 years, it actually added to our strong identity branding as a health conscious. So there's no data at all that says that COVID somehow is making a lot of people go to drive-throughs. There's none. I'm, I haven't seen any of that. Furthermore, there's plenty of data that shows that a drive-through, the best drive-through McDonald's, if you're lucky, might give you a whopping $10,000 a year. $10,000. So it's not going to fix our $18 million budget by bringing in a bunch of drive-throughs. So there's plenty of data indicating that that's not how you manage a city by bringing in businesses that. that hurt your identity, but furthermore, really doesn't do you any purpose, except maybe you, you might get lucky by getting one here and there. But anyway, appreciate your commentary and you and I are on the same page on this issue.
Thank you.
I was hoping you would speak because, because you spoke in favor of it 12 years ago. I want to hear your rebuttal. I was, I was about to call it.
Thank you, Mayor Duper, Councilmen and Woman. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. It has been an interesting evening. I will address the, the previous topic. I guess we will never know if the voters would have voted in favor or against. And I think that's a real shame. And it's, it's something that will go down, I think, in the history of, of this city that the voters were not allowed. I, I find it just very anti-democratic as a citizen of the city.
Can I interrupt you for one second? Nothing prevents from voters from going door to door, getting 2,500 signatures and putting on the ballot. It doesn't require us to do it. The citizens can put an initiative on the ballot. I did it. We put in a measure to limit a lot of things in Loma Linda. And in fact, you're a part of it. You helped us collect signatures. So you're aware of it. So there's nothing undemocratic by voting against putting something on the ballot that's very clear for one purpose of just to raise the citizens.
I'll let you guys discuss that. You have more time than I do, I think. Yeah, going door to door. I've done that. I think this conversation should have happened before March though. I think it would have looked very differently up here, but just that comment. I wanted to provide a little bit of history on, on healthy Loma Linda because Dr. Disinger and I were a big part of that. 2012, there is a significant group of folks who came together and worked with the city and we had listening sessions right here at City Hall. We had two interns, I remember Lizzie Foltz and Andres Galenix who were funded by the, oh, what's the Lewis Foundation to, to be in the city, working on urban planning issues and healthy cities. Back then, the county had funding for healthy cities. And when the funding went away, a few cities continued with that healthy cities program. Rancho, Healthy Rancho is one. Healthy Harupa Valley is another, Healthy Fontana. These are not cities that are known as blue zones or that we think of as like the epitome of health. But I know that Healthy Harupa Valley in the last five years has drawn down grant money in the 10, tens of millions of dollars. So about $2 million per year in the last five years. And there are ways of, of drawing funds just by having a healthy city program that doesn't have to cost the city anything. There are Randall Lewis fellows who, who are ready and I think Dr. Wong is, is working on, on bringing some to the city. So I would just encourage the city to look for ways of staying true to that blue zone reputation that we have. We're sitting on a gold mine. And it, it does pain me to see city council working almost in isolation. I, I'm happier speaking with the university, Mayor Duper, because we're sitting on a gold mine, not just with a blue zone, but with the medical center and the university. My students take their business elsewhere. I think a gentleman behind me said, a lot of our folks spend their money in, in cities around us. When you ask my students where they go to study and to, to buy their food and, and drink their coffee, Stells, Olive Market, Slow Bloom, it's all Redlands places, or they go to Hospitality Lane. So here we have over 4,000 students. We have 17,000 employees at Loma Linda who have to get their food somewhere and they're not buying it at the cafeteria, by the way. They're ordering out and they're buying from businesses all around us. So I think there's a huge opportunity for us to invest locally. But it doesn't have to be one or the other. It doesn't have to be health or prosperity. And that's what I want to leave you with is it can be health and prosperity. And I think a lot of times we, we create these false dichotomies. And we saw it during the pandemic. It was public health versus business, which was not true. Businesses that were smart, businesses, restaurants who opened up their, their sidewalks and, and took their business outdoors did very well and continue to do well. So I would just plead with you to tap into what we have. I mean, other cities would kill to have what we have, the reputation. Everywhere we go, people ask about this blue zone and want to come and see this. This could be a tourist destination. And what I would like for you to think about is every time that these groups, these journalists come from, we just had a group from, besides the group that you hosted, from Italy, we had another group from Spain. We have folks that come here to see this blue zone. Where do we take them to eat? Right now.
I took them to Redlands.
Right. Yeah. You, you take them somewhere else. You take them to the nearby city. So think about the type of restaurants. And then finally, the, the data should be informing our decisions. And drive-through restaurants, if you talk to any urban planner, drive-through restaurants do not bring that much revenue. Sit-down restaurants bring a lot more. And when you have, and I know there's a whole high-density discussion. I was a pro Measure V to save our hills, but I think we've taken it too far where we don't want to allow any kind of high-density in our city that could bring more revenue, more residents for, for students, for staff. And then businesses on the first floor where you have high-density walkability. That's the kind of thing Redlands is doing. That's the kind of thing that Claremont's doing. We wouldn't be pioneers in it, but it just makes business sense that would address a lot of the issues that we just saw here with our budget. So just want to remind you that it's not health or prosperity. We can do both.
JC, can I ask you a question on this? So this would, this ordinance limits, like if, say I want to get one of these high-end, oh, it's, I don't even want to say the name, something vegan, a horrible vegan name. Like they're lower, they have drive-through, but they're not these large chains like McDonald's. I could still get a drive-through like that where it's a higher, higher-end, like that kind of restaurant. How, how can I read this and know that? Like, because what I'm, what I'm hearing is you're limiting all fast food. I don't want any more McDonald's. We don't want that because that's not, that's not the brand. But we do have to have drive-through because, you know, like even Panera, you can get drive-through Panera vegetarian here. And I mean, that to me is a good place, but I do want restaurants that are going to be unique to Loma Linda where people don't say, hey, you can get that in Loma Linda or Redlands or San Bernardino. I want something that's unique, but I want to be able to have drive-through.
JC, let me ask you a question. And, and maybe we got to turn off the recording. I don't know if we wanted this to get out. Do you drink coffee?
I do.
He does.
Good. All right, cool. And, and Dr. Disinger, do you drink coffee? I'm going to. Sometimes. So there, my understanding, and this is from the business community, is that there was a high-end coffee chain that does drive-through only that approached the city and they were told, you cannot come here because we do not allow your business. They subsequently went and opened in Redlands. That is a hundred percent true. And that is, for some strange reason, they thought that having a coffee place here with all these hospitals around here and 24/7 and all that other stuff might make sense to some degree. There's another, there's another one that's out there that by most, and, and, and this isn't about being vegetarian or not, because I know there's a mixture of people that are and aren't. But this is probably a place that a lot of vegetarians go to that is testing drive-through possibilities. And they again, want that ability and would love to see how that would work here in town, but we're told you cannot come to town because of our position on that. I feel very confident and I'm not sure why our, our planning department is not here tonight, but the ordinance that we had put in front of us was not just a, hey, open it up for everybody. You can waltz into town. We don't have any type of development like that. Everybody has to go through the planning and approval process. And my understanding is we still have pretty stringent requirements and ways to, to mitigate that. And I, quite honestly, I don't think McDonald's even wants to come back here based on what happened 12 years ago. So it's, it's not about that. And I will take it a step further. For me, there's a bigger one that I would love to get to, but I don't know the appetite of our council. And that is, most of our sit-down restaurants, higher sit-down, higher-end sit-down restaurants want to have alcohol options. And we don't have that. And so when you talk about taking people out to dinner, whether it's even Olive Garden, we actually, another true story is Applebee's wanted to move from that location there into Loma Linda. And there's an alcohol restriction that would not allow them and they are not going to change their national business model because they think they can just overcome that and make money in Loma Linda. And so they bowed out. So these are, again, and, and what I find funny, Mr. Propescu, who's, who's a staunch conservative and argues about business, doesn't want to let voters decide for their own on a tax, but yet can, wants to decide on business and be preclusive on certain businesses.
Just want to correct. You can serve alcohol in Loma Linda if you, if you meet certain requirements. There's plenty of restaurants that serve alcohol. So I'm not sure where you're getting your information that you can have a restaurant in Loma Linda that serves alcohol.
Where?
The, how do you call it?
Taylors.
Well, no.
That's all they serve.
Taylors got absorbed through annexation.
No, I'm talking about, I'm thinking of the Italian place on Napoli's, yes. They serve alcohol. There's, there's certain limitations about the size of the restaurants, the type of service they provide. And the fact that you have to have a waiter, you can't do a takeout. Well, you can do alcohol in Loma Linda. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
By the way, it's beer and wine, beer and wine only.
Okay. Well, it may be different if you want to have a bar.
I'd like to respond to both questions. So I'll, I'll start with Councilwoman Wong's question about vegan or healthy drive-throughs. The ordinance that we supported, I think it was a compromise. I, there's a whole spectrum of this, was that it couldn't be fast or junk food and a drive-through. So if it was a healthy drive-through, there was more support for that.
Unfortunately, however, it was written, it was written differently.
For, for, from a planning perspective, it does decrease walkability though. And that's, that's my personal response. If you have a lot of drive-throughs, it's more car-dense, less walkable, and it doesn't bring that much revenue. If you have mixed use where you have apartments on the top, coffee shops on the bottom, more high walkability, that actually brings a lot more revenue to the city. So I, I would like to kind of steer us in that direction.
What, what's driving this for me is I have specific land and building owners that are currently vacant, that are trying to open those up. And we're not talking about new builds. And, and we're talking about places that aren't necessarily in the best walkable areas. But I, I believe that. I agree with you a hundred percent. I understand that.
I also remember Native Foods was wanting to come here. Do you all remember what happened there?
I heard they couldn't get an alcohol license.
So I think that was going to be addressed from what I understood, the city council was ready to make some changes there. What I heard was that when they came and visited the site, they saw McDonald's and they saw Walmart and they said, that's not our demographic. So they.
What I was told is they do a 10-mile radius circle. And the problem with that is when you do a 10-mile circle, you get San Bernardino, no, you get San Bernardino. And they said, it doesn't match our demographic. That's what was told to us officially.
Okay. So we all have different versions, but it, that was a huge loss. I think Native Foods would be amazing. So what I would love to see is that we partner together because there are people who, like Dr. Disinger, are known nationally, internationally. We approach some of these businesses, not just one person from city council, but as a university, as a city. We approach them and say, we would like to have you come here. And imagine the, the marketing that they would get.
I appreciate that. I have to say this though. And this is directly from Dr. Hart. The university is not advocating for anything but the university. And we have to be careful with that. So even, even though you folks work there, you have to be careful about saying that's part of what you're advocating for. I think we're all very clear on trying to make sure we stay in each, out of each other's lanes and, and we're helping where we can and whatnot. So I would just caution with that, number one. But number two, it's, it's so, it, to me, time is, is going by like that, right? Like literally, we were here a couple of weeks ago and it doesn't even seem like that. Like days for me are flying. I don't know if that's for you. I don't know if it's because I'm getting old. I, I don't know. But in, and it's so easy for all of us, including council members to say, well, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. And I'm, I'm excited to hear about this Economic Development Revenue Generation Committee because it's needed, but we got to actually hold ourselves to that. So it's super easy and dude, I know you'll do it. I, I'm not, I'm not worried about either one of you. But it's so easy for us to say, oh yeah, you know, we're all, we're going to be in this, we're going to do it together. But man, we all have busy lives and things happen. And in most cities, Rancho Cucamonga, I worked there for over 10 years. I love that city. I have a great relationship with the city manager there. I think he's one of the smartest people I know. He has a staff of like 300 people. Constantly we're reminded of the, the things we can and can't do based on the people that we don't have. And so we're in this hole. How do we get out of the hole? Well, we need more staff because our staff are overworked. Well, how do we get more staff? We don't have the money for that. Well, we need more money to get money. It's, it's like, it's making me dizzy. And I don't know, I don't know how to address it. And you know, I mean, Jarb's trying his best and realistically, that's what we're supposed to hire staff for. We're supposed to have an economic development director. And so that's where we had this kind of belief compromise. And we're in a budget deficit as we're now basically saying, hey, Jarb, you have to hire that person. Because until we have somebody who's got the time to focus on that, we're not getting anywhere. And so I,
what?
I appreciate all of that. I, I, and, and maybe, I don't, I don't know. Maybe, maybe if it doesn't work, then we re-look at it again. But I just think there's some opportunities against. And the other thing that we hear from businesses is we don't appear business friendly. There are so many restrictions of the city that even if it doesn't apply to them, they don't even want to come approach us because they fear they've been, they've been, and I see nods from our brand-new chamber director. And the previous chamber director stood up here multiple times and told us the same stuff. Business owners are telling us it is frustrating because it feels like we can't do business and we're not welcoming. And whether or not we like those businesses, I don't know. I, I don't know. So that's kind of where I'm at.
And, and just to address your, your concern about separating university from, from city, I'm actually hired by the university to do community relations. So I'm the director of the Institute for Community Partnerships. I spend most of my time sure north of the freeway in San Bernardino, but I do think that every university has a responsibility to their own community, to their, their city. And politics apart, you know, the, the university cannot get involved in, in political campaigns or anything, but when it comes to the, the community benefit, I think there's a lot of room for improvement there.
I would agree a hundred percent. We can collaborate on getting grants together. There's no doubt about it. There's a lot more we can do together.
JC, what if we were, and I know, like, I'm probably going to get crucified from one angle or the other. But what, what if we, what if we were to hold off on thinking about the ordinance and deciding? If we were to come up with the plan of what businesses we want and already start approaching them. So there's a plan and we work with the chamber and figure out, I know he's going to kill me, but.
It just, we're not getting anywhere, people.
I know.
We talk about this stuff for years. We literally are not getting anywhere.
What if we did this and we had a two-week plan to come back and submit?
So there's the SB 1000 survey that you're sending out right now as part of the, the EJ efforts of the state. That survey has questions about this very thing. Why not wait until, speak about, you know, letting the voters or the citizens talk on this issue. There are questions in that survey about what kind of city do you want? And where do you want the revenue to come from? Why don't we wait until we get those responses and then make a, a decision? It's very similar to this previous discussion. It's very similar to this previous discussion.
My one concern is, I agree with the mayor, is that when we drag things out, things don't happen, right? Like, we're already coming back, and I feel like we have really one year to figure out. Like, I'm trying to think of, how do we put a turnaround plan together for the city within one to two years, right? So I'm saying, within the next, by the next city council, we already have together.
A list of restaurants.
A list of restaurants.
That we're going to court.
Our A, who we want, our B, and we go and we get them.
I know there's, I can commit personally in recruiting other people who have a voice, who can help recruit and approach businesses. So I think we do have to be proactive.
Dr. Reese, did you need to weigh in?
Not really, but my observation is that it's one thing to want a restaurant, it's another for a restaurant to want you. And that's our biggest problem. And it has to do with this five-mile radius. It's not a 10-mile radius, it's five. And they look at the number of rooftops. And we fail on the rooftops because five miles north is San Bernardino, and it's the wash. And there's not a lot of rooftops there. And then in our hills that we saved at great expense, have no rooftops. So we don't get the big companies. And they just go, oh, it doesn't fit our model. So that's my only caution on that. I think it'd be great, and we'd have a much better chance of getting those great restaurants if we had the university and the city working together. So I think that's a great thing. But don't think that you can just snap your fingers and they show up. They have very specific and crude measures of viability, and we just fail. And it's not just the drive-through thing. It's pretty much the whole thing. We're just not a big enough town.
I would agree with you, except for the fact that so many of us have to go to Redlands to eat, which clearly.
I know, but Redlands has a bigger chunk of people in a five-mile radius around them.
Yes, but when you have, what, 40,000 people coming into this town every day? We're not educating the developers about the potential of hundreds of millions of dollars of money that could be spent here. So I think we're basing our assumptions based on the old model that, oh, we need a bunch of rooftops to justify a restaurant. But nobody's talked about the other advantages that Loma Linda has. And that's part of these, I'm talking to ESRI and saying, put together an amazing business plan that identifies very clearly. I mean, those people are so intelligent, they can tell you exactly who's coming into this town, how much money they're spending, and where they're spending it. And all you need to do is target the right developer and saying, hey, your customers here. You don't have to wait to build 10,000 homes. They're already here. So I think there's an opportunity there for us to attract some of those businesses that perhaps in the past, wouldn't have come to us because they just use the old model. We just have to re-educate them.
I'm just going to make a guess that that data, though, is going to show the people that actually come into this town are very drastically different from your blue zone model. Because the people that are coming in here.
I disagree. Back when I got on the council, I talked to the university and I had them give me the average salary. And gosh, 20 years ago, it was huge. The medical centers, most of the employees there are making very good money. So they've got a huge buying opportunity.
No, they're not.
Maybe the surgeons.
Hold on, hold on. All you have to do is go to the ER on a Saturday night, which.
We're not talking about ER folks. We're talking about residents.
No, we're talking about patients.
No, no, not every patient goes to the ER. There's patients that goes to the doctor for other appointments.
Patients that go to the.
Are you still taking public comment?
We are, but.
Please, please. We're talking over each other now, and we're not moving the agenda forward. And this young lady's been patiently waiting, and I think I want to hear what she has to say.
All right. I thought I could provide some ideas that can help out this discussion. So my name is Brianna. I'm a student at Loma Linda University. I'm a resident of Loma Linda, a voter, a taxpayer here. I identify with a lot of things that have been shared. I want to just reiterate what we all have agreed upon tonight, which is that the city does need more revenue. We need to identify policy fixes for this, whether that is in the zoning code or identifying opportunities for grants. I think we can all agree on that. What I am not sure about is with this ordinance, 712, I did a search on it, and I wasn't able to find the original language. I'd like to know what about that original ordinance is preventing businesses and restaurants from opening up? And if we can identify those barriers and change those and maybe liberalize that, then we can become more business friendly. And I think that there's kind of this image that there's already headlines, there's already like newspaper articles about this, that Loma Linda is reversing its fast food ban. So I think it's a tough needle to thread. But for example, perhaps there's restrictions in the code on things like floor area ratio, which limits the size of restaurants or businesses, prevents building a second story in your commercial district, for example, and makes things overall a lot more car-oriented with huge parking lots. So I think floor area ratio is something that we need to look at in the zoning code and increasing that. The other thing is parking minimums. So a lot of cities will have arbitrary parking minimums that are not really grounded in science or research, but set a limit, for example, of every 100 square foot of restaurant needs at least two parking spaces. Or every, there's even things in the code in other cities that do have bars and alcohol, which totally goes against your understanding of drunk driving and everything like that. But there are codes in cities that will say, for every 50-foot of bar, square footage, you need two parking spots. And so what we end up having in this city and in other cities are these strip mall developments, the large complexes with grocery stores and huge parking lots that are never fully used. And so I think those are policy fixes that we need to look at and change. And maybe ask these businesses, what is preventing you from opening up? And how can we make those changes? So I think we need careful look and combing through that. And then we can open up the opportunity for greater investment in the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments. That was helpful for me. To try to move this forward, because we're past my bedtime, I'd like to make a couple of comments. One is that I would like to table this item because I've heard multiple interpretations, multiple and varying interpretations of the ordinance that we are about to repeal or vote on repealing. I'd like to see the ordinance, and I think city staff can get that to us so that we can study it and try to absorb some of the discussion we've been listening to tonight. So that's one point. The second point is that, how long ago is it since we passed this ordinance?
12 years.
12 years. And I can remember hearing many of the same identical discussions that certainly had an influence on my vote in support of the ordinance. And I'm not sure what parts of it we may or may not be violating, and whether repealing would be helpful or not at this point. But I know that I was influenced by you, Dr. Dicinger, because you were part of that movement, and there were multiple other people. It made sense. We were looking, we were facing opportunity and unique opportunity. And I think, is that before blue zones were identified?
No.
It was after blue zones.
2008.
Okay, okay, thank you. But nothing has come of it. And I can tell you, we had a community development person who was also the assistant city manager named Conrad. And Conrad worked that. And he, you know, at that time, I had kids at home, and my kids loved going to Veggie Grill and would bring burgers and other things to us from Veggie Grill. And we liked them. And I'm going, and I talked with Conrad. Conrad contacted Veggie Grill and ran into the same issue we've heard about the radius and our population and so forth. So those are real issues we have to confront. But since we approved the ordinance, I don't know if there's been, I know what Conrad was trying to do, and I've heard reports about the outcomes. But when I hear there's potential for, you know, there's $40 million out there that we may be able to benefit from in some way, and other opportunity that we're uniquely positioned to take advantage of this, I'm still turned on by that. But it hasn't happened for 12 years now. And to kind of be the pragmatist in the discussion, the city council, working in collaboration with the city management, we've got some serious work to do. We have to either cut services and staff, or we have to generate revenue. And the next agenda item is from Councilman Wang to, she doesn't want to cut things. She wants to generate revenue. And I'll tell you in advance of that discussion, I'd like to see you two guys on this committee to help us operationalize the potential that I've been hearing described for a long time. And for whatever reason, we haven't been able to capitalize on yet. And so I appreciate the comments, and I think we're all supportive of sustaining the collaborative relationship that we've had with the university and other businesses in the community. But, you know, now's the time, it's got to happen. It just has to happen. And I'm not saying we're going to have an instant inflow of money, but we at least need to have a strategic plan that looks realistic, that we can follow up on. Then I'd be supportive. In the meantime, I challenge anybody and everybody because not all wisdom lies in this dais. But any suggestions you have, because we don't want to cut services. We saw the survey. Our citizens don't want services cut. They don't want the environment changed. They want to sustain the security and the healthiness. But now we're at a point where the rubber's got to meet the road, and we've got to be, if this is realistic, and I'm certainly hopeful that it is, now's the time that we have to really settle in and make some strategic plans. At least for now, we're not going to raise sales tax either half cent or one cent. So we've got to start coming up with some other concrete options. And if you guys can help us with this, and the resources you have that we don't have, your city would be grateful. Okay. Okay, yeah, the motion was to table this and to get a copy of the actual wording of the ordinance so that we're all reading off the same page.
May I make a comment? The ordinance was attached to the staff report. We left all the changes that were being made, I'm just speaking for community development. All the additions were in red, underlined. All the items that were being removed were struck out in red. And it was all part of your packet. It was included in your packet.
You'll have to help me find it in this.
I think the issue is not the ordinance, it's clarification on whether we actually have the option of putting in certain restaurants and not others. I agree with the mayor. I'm not sure we have that option. So maybe there's some confusion about that. So I think we need at least get that clarified.
I don't think it was because it sounds like a total disconnect. And I don't remember ever recalling in here where it talks about a chain that has to have X amount of restaurants or any of that kind of stuff, but it's right. Yeah.
Yeah, that's code.
Okay, so I'm looking at the definition. So one of them is a fast food restaurant would drive in or drive through, no late hours, no late hours was struck. Because presumably, one of these coffee chains was a 24-hour drive-through. But does not provide late hour services, see late night hour services. Talks about a food service establishment that uses a trademark logo, service mark, or other mutually identifying name or symbol, which maintains any standard array of merchandise. So basically, any type of chain restaurant was forbidden, according to this. That was struck out. So.
I would like to hear the opinion of an attorney to look at this and give us an idea as to what's allowed and not allowed. I don't think, I'm not comfortable us making that decision as to what it really means.
You mean under the current ordinance?
The current ones that we're trying to remove, what is it truly allow and not allow?
It doesn't get specific into which kind of restaurants or what their menu content might be. It's just removing the blanket prohibition on drive-throughs.
What I'm reading is the red part that's being struck out. Because, and there it says, a drive-through shall be long enough to accommodate. So obviously, there are some drive-throughs being allowed if we're striking out that portion of it. So there are some things that are allowed as related to drive-through. What I'm not clear on is what are the parameters that would prohibit someone coming to Loma Linda?
Well, I think that one section that I read, which was struck through, which talks about any business that has a trademark logo.
Okay, that could be one.
So right there and then, if you have any of these.
Businesses that have a logo.
Well, if you have a chain.
Even two is a chain then, if they have a logo.
Well, that's right.
It's got to be national.
Milford.
I just wanted to say that I represent a property owner who is ready to sign a lease for a drive-through restaurant right now. It's not off in the future. It's in negotiations right now. And they're ready to go.
Would you eat there?
So.
Oh, maybe I shouldn't ask that.
I would drink there.
What I might suggest is that the council consider continuing this to the next meeting when we have the community development director back. I think Councilmember Daly may be correct. Part of what this says is that we're repealing ordinance 712 in its entirety. And I don't know that we have all of that in here, Lynette. Because we've added the parts 7.40, and we've made edits to the definitions. But, so we could add more to the staff report to show specifically what was adopted. And then, of course, you know, it translates into the code. And what we've provided here is the recommended changes to the code.
Which I find interesting because some of the recommended changes include like outdoor dining specifically, giving permission to do that. I really, and it is, I swear, it seems like one after the other. And I'm going to vent for a minute. We started this months and months ago, and I'm going to assume she's on vacation. Legitimately not here, but those questions probably could have been answered. And I don't know, maybe it still needs work. I don't know. At this point, I'm just feeling a little challenged that we continually are running this hamster wheel and we're not progressing.
Right.
It was, in all fairness to staff, it was discussed at the previous meeting. And these issues and concerns were not raised. So the typical way we do things in Loma Linda is it gets thrashed out at that first reading, hearing. So then if things need to be tweaked, we can bring them back for another first reading. So those issues weren't raised. So usually, the second reading is somewhat perfunctory. Doesn't have to be.
This has been on previous agendas, and nobody showed up.
Well, that's.
I was the only one that spoke on them.
That was my complaint at the last meeting when we talked about it. There were people who are still in town, and they showed up this week, that didn't come and speak about it because they didn't know about it. And we asked some questions of people who might know them, and the answer was, they don't care anymore about this issue. and the answer was, they don't care anymore about this issue. And then we went forward with the vote. And I wanted to know their opinions. That's why, you know, when J.C. hadn't spoken yet, I wanted to get his opinion because he was one of the guys who was a proponent. And we modeled this thing on Clermont. I don't know what SB 1000 is, but we modeled it on Clermont's prohibition. And if you go to Clermont, there aren't any fast food restaurants in the whole town. And we kinda liked that feel, this college-town thing. And we also had the experience of not being able to attract Veggie Grill or anybody else because of their radius issue. And we didn't think that there would be much of an impact from this prohibition of fast food because that wasn't their model. But now we hear from various people, and we don't know whether it's true or not, that these people have changed their models. You know, and a Veggie Grill wants to succeed in the future, it has to have a drive-through. And Veggie Grills, just as one example, they're basically going out of business. I mean, their, their business model is failing, from what I can tell.
Panera Bread's a very good example of that.
Yeah.
You never heard of a Panera Bread with a drive-through two or three years ago? And they're just, now they're doing it a lot. Incidentally, my client's potential is, fits very well with the Blue Zone.
Yeah, and I think we might be on the same page with that one, but I don't wanna say the name either because it's, could potentially hurt that. But it's in line with, say, a Panera.
I know it's late, so we can't keep talking. But the point is not trying to get rid of restaurants, right? The point is trying to keep a healthy community. And this retail food environment index is a very real thing that gives us science as far as ways we can try to help keep a healthy community. So, you know, we don't need to, if, you know, drive-through, fast food restaurants, keep our community healthy, let's, let's go for it. But we should try to keep our community healthy.
Okay, there was a motion to table, so we just need a second.
Second.
There's a second.
Want to change the word, I'm sorry, change the wording on the motion to continue the item?
The advantage to continuing it is, is we don't have to renotice and everything. So I think that would probably be staff's preference as it gets continued to a certain date. And I think that might address the mayor's concern about-
Still looking at two weeks from now or do we no longer have a need for that? What's our, what's our plan? I'm good either way. So now this gets pushed another month.
And that probably is better for staff, that they have the additional time.
August or September? You're saying September? August. August 13th. Is that your motion?
I modify my motion according to the-
First meeting in August.
Do you understand the modified motion?
13, yeah, August 13th. To continue the item to August 13th, is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second the modification.
Motion, sorry. Motion is to continue this item to August 13th. I will take your vote. Councilmember Spencer Wong?
Support.
Councilmember Papezku?
Yes.
Councilmember Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Daly?
I'm sorry, I, I'm losing my voice, I'm falling asleep.
Motion passed.
Okay.
I had to learn Robert's Rules of Order, so I try to-
Dr. Wong, you are up.
Okay, in light of no sales tax, I know we're gonna need to really begin developing a revenue generating committee and I think it's a blessing in disguise that J.C., you guys are here because I'm hoping you'll join me in our city as we develop a committee to really think about how to, you know, how are we gonna generate revenue? And how do we embrace our model as, you know, a city of wellness and prosperity? So I'm looking forward, if you guys like, to partner with you guys and we'll partner with the rest of the council and other people to bring in, you know, revenue and figure out those businesses and what, you know, food industry do we want here? So it's late and probably next, next council, I'll have some more concrete as to how we can move forward. So, but I look forward to hearing your guys' idea and how we do this.
You wanna talk about it a little bit more or you think?
I think it's okay, we can go.
Okay. And I, and I know you weren't able to work on this as much because you, you had that personal loss, so we're sorry for that. And hope your mom is doing okay.
Yeah, things are, yeah, yeah. And the flowers were really beautiful that they sent.
Since we're gonna continue the item, I don't know if you're in your presentation and go into details as to what you envisioned this committee, how it's gonna be made up, how it meets, does it need to have a C. representative?
Yes.
I'd like to get a little more detail.
That's all we have.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to reports, so reports of council members.
Just a general comment, I just recently got back from Kenya for two weeks and I just wanted to make a point because I went there with Loma Linda University and, you know, I'm probably one of the biggest fans of this institution on this council. But, you know, this institution has an amazing, amazing impact around the world. I mean, not only does it impact us in Loma Linda, it's giving us millions of dollars in revenue, gives us thousands of jobs, the educational is amazing, healthcare. I can't even tell you how many people are proud of the healthcare we provide, but I got a chance to go to Loma Linda University, it was my second time going to Kenya and I was really proud to see students from speech pathology, public health. We had people from public health there, we had dentists, we had nurses. And they all, everybody was appreciative of the services they all provided and providing healthcare seminars to the community of the Masai folks. And they've been doing it for 17 years. So it was my second opportunity to go with them. I'm working on a separate project with them of trying to deliver blood by drone and I got to visit a hospital that was about three hours away. And, you know, it's being staffed by American doctors, but once again, they were appreciative of the fact that, even though this is not a university project, it's my own personal project, the fact that I was there was very much appreciated because it brought Loma Linda again in the limelight. We helped establish hospitals all over the world and our reputation continues to grow and grow as a city and institution that provides so many amazing services. So the point I'm making is that sometimes we as the council don't do enough to express our appreciation for the University of the Medical Center does to not our only own community, but across the world. So that was my two cents on that.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to reports of officers.
I'd like to thank you, Sonia, Lynette and Diane for helping us prepare this report and the budget. It was a lot of work, thank you.
Yeah, and I've talked to Diane a few times over the last couple of weeks, especially after Dick passed and all that. And I know you guys have put a lot of work, hoping that this was gonna get some traction. And so I'm sure it's probably disappointing and, but I appreciate all the work that you guys put into it, it was very thorough, very detailed. And thank you for all the hard work that you guys do every day. It is, it is appreciated, maybe not all, but most. Okay, since we already have the housing authority open, we'll move into that. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on a non-agendized housing authority item? Seeing nobody, we can move on to the consent calendar.
Move it.
Second.
So we have a first and a second.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar for the housing authority as submitted. Councilmember Spencer Wong?
Support.
Councilmember Papezku?
Yes.
Councilmember Rixby?
Yes.
Councilmember, oh, Mayor Pretend Daly?
Hi.
Mayor Juper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Any reports of council members or officers, seeing none, we will close the housing authority and move on to the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, anyone from the public wishing to speak on a non-agendized successor agency item, please run forward. Kinda wish that I saw Dick back there raising his hand. Yeah? All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Move it. Second.
We have a first and a second for that, Madam Clerk.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar and the successor agency as submitted. Councilmember Spencer Wong?
Support.
Councilmember Papezku?
Yes.
Councilmember Rixby? Mayor Pretend Daly?
Hi.
Mayor Juper?
Yes.
Motion carry, thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes all of our agendas and we'll see you guys in a month.